All right, the first piece of business, this is a resolution by Councilor John Leo McKinnon to invite John Coyle up to Dex Government Operations to improve his idea for 5K race to benefit autism awareness.
Mr. Coyle, if you please come out.
Just state your name, address for the residence here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Sean Coyle, I live at 80 Foster Street.
Are you going to be doing a presentation tonight?
Yes, we're going to do a PowerPoint presentation.
And this is it in the form?
Yes.
So ladies and gentlemen, you've got one of these in front of you that you're going to be doing a PowerPoint presentation, so begin.
Okay, thank you. I would like to start off that I'm a lifelong resident here in Everett, I own and operate two businesses here in the local community. I just want to start by thanking the members of the council, namely Leo McKinnon.
Speak right into the mic.
Okay. For affording me this opportunity to present our nonprofit organization proposed 5K run-walk event to raise money for local families who have children with autism. And to spread awareness that autism has reached epidemic proportions and is and will affect our community for these children, their parents, and their siblings for a lifetime. As many of you know, my son Shane has autism. He'll be 14 years old this July, he is currently finishing up the 7th grade here at the Madeline English. Many have seen us walk through the city and we enjoy all the things that the school system has to offer, we go to the basketball games, we are Everett, we are part of the community, me and my son. Historically, my advocacy for autism has included 14 years of advocating for my son. I have a local tattoo shop here in Everett, we have done free tattoos for parents with children with autism. We have also volunteered fundraising for Autism Speaks. Over the past two years, we have done a canning drive that has raised over $11,000 for two local Everett families who have children with autism. The most recent fundraising campaign in April of this year, I was deeply moved by all the community coming out and donating money. It was pretty amazing to see how all of our community is touched by autism. So many people have sons, daughters, nephews, nieces, grandchildren who have autism, the numbers just blew me away. Additionally, I was touched by the show of support. The McGofflin family from the 2013 campaign was right there alongside me with their friends and family to help me out this year. I can't begin to tell you how many people would like to participate in this effort. I had one gentleman show up with a big bucket asking me, can I help, can I help, can I go, you know, I'll go down on Broadway, and I had to explain to this gentleman, you know, we have a permit here and there's a process. His grandson has autism and he's a local member of this community also. I was moved by his enthusiasm and his desire to partake, but I had to turn him down. The fundraising campaign vision we have for our nonprofit organization, we would like to do a 5K run-walk event, we also understand that a light it up blue campaign would be nice throughout the city for families to know that there is an autistic child in that household. And of course, we traditionally do a canning drive at my local business. Our mission, our mission is to fundraise to benefit local Everett families affected by autism, to build community and to raise awareness to our community of the staggering growth in the number of Everett families with autistic children. In May, we formed our nonprofit organization Ferry Street Inc. Autism Awareness Fundraiser Incorporated. We successfully obtained an employee identification number from the IRS, our articles of organization and bylaws were approved and accepted by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We have opened the organization's bank accounts and at present, we currently are awaiting the approval of the IRS on our tax exempt 503(c) status. Once we receive the approval from the IRS, we will file an application for a tax exempt 501(c) status with the Commonwealth. I would like to have everyone be on the alarming statistics page if possible.
That's page seven, Mr. Coyle.
Yes, that is page seven, Mr. Chairman. One in 68 children now are diagnosed in the United States with autism. That's right, one in 68. That's a 30% increase from one in 88 two years ago, according to a new report released by the Center of Disease Control and Prevention. So that's one in 68 children that will be born in our town, in our city, in our community that will have autism. It's an epidemic proportion. The following page, page eight, shows a 600% increase over 20 years. From 1975, you can see, there was one in 5,000 children born with autism. Now in 2014, we have one in 68 children. Behind these numbers are real people, families with siblings. Every one of these numbers is a family that's come into terms with the implications of the diagnosis for the lifespan of their loved one. More children will be diagnosed this year than with AIDS, diabetes, and cancer combined. CED, the CDC, the Center of Disease Control, is working on one of the largest studies to date called Study to Explore Early Development. CED is looking into why children are getting this disorder. They are looking at many risk factors for ASD, including genetic, environmental, pregnancy, and behavioral factors. So this is the largest study for the CDC to date. It's amazing, the numbers are staggering, and it's not all just about the numbers. You know, we are families with autistic children. We have loved ones, we have children, there's aunts, uncles, everyone is affected by this. So fundraising for autism is the next slide on page nine. It clearly shows that the fundraising for one in 68 children is about $79 million, I believe, there. So that's one in 68, one in 70, it really doesn't matter, you know, it's epidemic proportions that we're leaning into, you know. In the end, it's not so much about the final number, what matters is that we know this is not a rare disorder. It's important that each individual gets the help they need to have the best quality of life. The cost of autism per year is nearly twice as high as the average child and adult with intellectual disabilities than those without intellectual disabilities. So what that says, what that means is, for me to have a child with autism, it costs more. It costs more, and the severer, the autistic child, it costs even more for that family. The race route, what I'm proposing is to have a 5K race that will start off on Elm Street, which will go to Washington, down Fuller, and then up Broadway, which will end at the Connolly Center. The race route distance is perfect, it's 3.5 miles, 3.34 miles, which equates a 5.37K. The starting and ending points are desirable because we want the celebration to be held at the Edward G. Connolly Center. Having the starting point at Glendale Park provides us with ample parking possibilities and, you know, high visibility, awareness is what we're looking for. We're looking for high visibility, we want the whole town to join in. We need the support of every family here in the city of Everett, and we need the support of the city government. We'd like to send a clear, concise message that this is real, this is happening, this is now. We need to be proactive and no longer reactive, it's an epidemic. We need to acknowledge it, we need to accept it, and we need to support those affected. We have considered many things for this race, timing and traffic, race day registration, our bib pickup will start at 9:00 AM at Glendale Park. The race begins at 11:00. We estimate the time for the walk-run would be about one hour to 1.5 hours, an hour and a half. And the post-celebration would begin at 12:00 PM at the Edward G. Connolly Center. We look to you, the members of the council, for guidance on this matter. Obviously, we should ascertain what time is more conductive to traffic flow, and we are willing to adjust the schedule according to your recommendations. What we're looking for is the support of the city government and all the people of the city. We really want everyone to be included in this. Our views, our goals of this race is to bring the community in and have an exceptional day for our children that have autism. Local businesses' approval and support. In one day, I went around and I went, I have a small petition here, that I went up Broadway and I asked the businesses what they think of my proposed race route. And there's several businesses, major businesses, I couldn't get to everyone, sometimes there wasn't owners there, but I do have a petition that is signed by a lot of local businesses, if you'd like to look, thank you. Of course, we also plan to meet and discuss the race route with the Chamber of Commerce Road closures, we understand that we'll need the police on our side, we'd need streets taped off and detour signage. We're looking for city services to help us out with that, we're looking for the police department, we're looking for the fire department, and we will contact ambulatory services. And of course, at any time, we're open to any suggestions that anyone, any member of the council would have for this. Permits, we will pull permits, we will talk to the police, the fire, and the ambulatory services that they just mentioned. Law enforcement, our local police department, we would need the help of the local police department, auxiliary police, possibly state police should be notified. Outside police details would be welcomed. We just need the support of the whole community and city government. Parking, having the race start at Glendale Park, which is beautiful, we have the new high school there, I believe parking would be all set there if we could talk to the school system, or if we could park in the front and the back of the high school, possibly using the skating rink, of course Everett does have off-street parking, but of course, we'd like the majority to possibly park there. And we are open to any suggestions on that matter. The post-event party. The post-event party, ultimate objective of the post-event party is to provide a medium for networking and information share, so those families affected with autism can be aware of the resources that are available to them. We'd like to invite certain groups such as art to set up vending booths to decimate, to deci, no, excuse me, for information that is key to assisting these families. A lot of families, they're not sure if their child has autism, so we're hoping to have educational booths there to provide them with information. I know when my son was diagnosed, I wasn't sure, I was, I just didn't know. And having education and information is key, so these families don't go through the mistakes that I made along the way. So with the approval, we would open up a website, we would do online advertising, social media, grassroots, local media, and mass mailing. The website, at present, we have on our nonprofit organization set up as a microsite within FSI's website. We did this because the hosting and domain costs are already provided by FSI, which is Ferry Street Inc., my business here in Everett. However, we have budgeted the domain and hosting costs for the nonprofit organization standalone website. Social media, the nonprofit organization Facebook page is under construction if we receive approval from the committee for the road race. We will construct the road race's individual fan page as well. We will need help, you know, grassroots, flyers, word of mouth, reach out to many groups and businesses, local businesses can display flyers and signage, we really want to have a run for fun for these children. It's a great cause. Local media, newspapers, radio, et cetera, would really help out, we're looking for their We're looking for sponsorship. If we see Team Simon signing up, ask if they have a company that would like to sponsor the event. Post a sponsorship page on our website with details for companies. Attend networking events to make connections and visit all local businesses here in Everett. We're looking for the support of our city. To register, we will register our nonprofit organization on active.com. This is a race website, it will be exposed to many people, and there are other online access for us, for nonprofit websites, to nonprofit Facebook page, race websites, race Facebook page, mail, and our other ways of supporting our race. We're looking for volunteers, high school kids, community outreach, there is volunteer warehouse, but I don't think we would need to access that, I believe that the whole city would join in on this. I really would like to include the whole city, our organization is based on people from the city, and we would like to include all of the people from the city to help out. We have equipment. The race will be a professionally timed race with chip timing. We have a local vendor that will supply us with that. And the equipment, we will be working on, you know, with, you also have to have bibs, so it would be a timed race. But we are open for people to walk also. So finally, you know, our mission is to raise funds to benefit local Everett families affected by autism. All the monies received are donations, this is a nonprofit organization, all the money will be given to our children here locally in Everett. We hope that this will extend out to other communities, and we want to build community within our city, we want our children accepted. We're here to raise awareness in our community to the staggering growth of the number of Everett families with autistic children. That is pretty much my presentation, and I would just like to talk freely. My son Shane is autism. It's been a long 14 years, you know, we've made mistakes along the way with doctors, we've tried everything, we've gone from, to Rhode Island, to New York, there is no magic pill, there is no doctor that's going to cure my son tomorrow, you know, the only thing that's going to help my son is the community, you know, to feel loved by his community. The reason why I opened up this, I opened up this organization, we opened up this organization, is that we want families to feel accepted. There's staggering numbers here, the CDC is running the biggest study, that should tell you something, we have a problem, we have a problem in our community, we have a lot of autistic children, there will only be more in the future. By proposing this nonprofit 5K race, we will build awareness throughout our city, I think we need that.
What date would that be?
That date would be April 25th of 2015. That gives us plenty of time if we're, if we are able to do this race, it gives us plenty of time to coordinate it with all the city officials, the police department, the fire department, ambulatory services. We want a group effort, we would love to see all of the members of the council included in what we're doing, the city services. We really need the support and help of everyone.
Right, right now, I've actually, I spoke to our city service director Jay Markcott earlier today, could Jay, could you please come up?
Thank you for appearing tonight, thank you for doing the presentation.
How are you doing? Nice to meet you.
Mr. Markcott, in our discussion, we've done races like this before for various events, and is this feasible, can we do something like this? We have till April 25th of 2015, so I'm sure that we could probably do something with it.
Correct, this is something that is feasible, and I do appreciate the timeframe that we have to work with this program and to make sure that everything is set and in place and everybody's on the same page, and as far as traffic and businesses and, you know, everything that is involved, we'll be able to, you know, discuss these far in advance to make sure things run smoothly.
Now, on our end, for city services, we would need to like maybe support some horses, barrels, that stuff, the type.
The standard traffic control stuff, yeah.
All right, thank you very much for appearing tonight, sir.
No problem.
Could we have Mr. David Rodriguez? Good. I had spoken to Melissa Murphy Rodriguez tonight. Good. I had spoken to Melissa Murphy Rodriguez tonight, actually earlier today. She said that the mayor would probably support something like this. And I just wanted your opinion on where we would be with that. Should we send it to the mayor's office for his approval? And then actually send it out to the chief of police and then the various organize, you know, our various groups here that we have?
In terms of process?
Yeah.
Is it, is it on, is it, I'm not, the piece in front of me, it's on as a resolution. I'd act on the resolution and then have it referred to the appropriate department, whether it be the mayor, and have the mayor's office take a look at it and organize the respective departments that, because this might be far reaching outside of, you know, it might not just be the police, it might be city services, it might be other things. It might be the rec. department, it might be a lot of other things that need, a lot of city personnel that need to be coordinated, and that's best done through the mayor's office.
Okay. So it's feasible to say we could do something like this?
I can't answer that. Yeah, that's not my position to answer the question. That's best answered by the, by the mayor's office and after getting the appropriate information from the appropriate personnel.
So what I'll do with this is I'll refer it to the mayor's office and the chief of police. I'll refer out to city services. I spoke to most of them. They're pretty much on board already. We should have an answer back reasonably soon.
I'm assuming so. From the city's perspective, we don't, I don't think we necessarily have a, like a run permit, like a permit that would, that would allow something of this exact type. So we'd have to investigate the permit that we issue that would be applied for the.
I believe there was other races that were.
Yeah, it might just be a parade permit. It might be some other things. So we'd have to take, take a look at it and just, just make sure that everything's done appropriately and all parties are notified.
Thank you very much. Thank you for appearing tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Coyle, any ending words?
Yes.
If we have one more piece, I would actually, we need to get to, so.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, could I invite Mrs. Jepson up?
Yes.
Mrs. Jepson also has an autistic child as well.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
This is Luke. My name is Marsha Jepson. I was fortunate enough to be the recipient of this year's donation. Wasn't something I signed up for. I know that Sean has, I've seen him can before, because I'm president of Everett, obviously, but totally blew me away of just the selfless, incredible, loving gesture that he did with giving to my family. And he's, my Luke's been in the system for 15 years. He's a wonderful boy. He's, and it just was so heartwarming to know that he could do this. And we are, you know, loved and people are generous and want to give. And I just think this race would be so important for Everett and just to bring out all the other families that are going through this. And just to let them know that people care. And even if you don't have autism, I mean, Luke is on the autism spectrum, but he's mentally challenged also. Just to bring out all the other children with disabilities of all kinds, to know that, that we're here to support. And it's just, would be a wonderful, wonderful thing. And I am going to pay for it and do whatever I can to help out. And we'll be there.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for appearing tonight. Mr. Coyle, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask one of the members to actually refer this to our, we have this on the agenda for tonight, to refer this out to our next meeting so that I can do the appropriate steps that I have to do. I have to send this to the mayor's office. I also have to send it to city services. I have to send it to the chief, I have to send it to a number of places. I don't want to.
Yes, I totally understand.
But that's what we'll be doing. That will be the next step. So if someone can.
I'd like to make a favorable recommendation to send this to the mayor in the department that would be needed to set this program going.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made to send this to the mayor's office and all the departments that would be involved for favorable action on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you for appearing tonight, Mr. Coyle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have my number, and we'll keep the touch.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Can we please read the next.
I had a number two. This is a resolution by Council Sania de Florio that the traffic commission to explain the no parking at the top of Prescott Street.
I'd like to make a motion to invite Council Florio de Florio, last part.
Councilwoman Rosa de Florio, please step forward. Before that, we're going to vote on this, that she can actually stay in to actually testify before us. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Councilwoman.
Thank you, councilors. We've had a few complaints in regards to a business on Main Street, but they're actual driveways on Prescott Street. I'm not here to hurt the business. I don't believe in that. I believe in helping out the businesses. But we have an issue with 18 trailer trucks going down Prescott Street. First, they're going over new sidewalks, which is blocking the streets. But the most important thing is that we have a school around the corner. This is a public safety issue. You have an 18-wheeler truck driving up the street between eight and five. School hours, kids get out of school at quarter past two, two thirty. Any child can get killed down there. There's no possible way an 18-year, 18-wheeler truck can see these children going by. That's number one. Number two, you should never have these 18-wheeler trucks in a residential area. Like I said, I don't want to hurt the business. But the business is also told, when they gave them the license, they were, they were not going to have these 18-wheeler trucks. So I know the business people are up here, and like I said, I'm not trying to hurt them, but they need to work with us. Because if they don't work with us, the next step is there'll be no trucks on that street at all. That, no trucking, no heavy trucking, period. It shouldn't be there. So Councilor Sania and myself have received a lot of calls. And Councilor Chetta, I know that you award, and I apologize that I didn't call you on this. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. It wasn't done intentionally. I just wasn't thinking. So I do owe you an apology.
We can amend that on the floor and add counsel, Councilor Chetta.
Okay. But we did get numerous calls. The people up here now, if you want to listen to them, they have pictures, they have pictures of 18-wheeler trucks blocking Main Street. They're blocking the street. Cars can't get up the street. The 18-wheeler trucks are blocking the streets. They're making U-turns in the middle of the streets to go back down. It's, it's a disaster. It's, you know, and like I said, it's a residential area. So we need to correct this, and we need it to correct it tonight. And I hope the business people will work with us to correct it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like a bigger motion to invite Sergeant Bogner up to explain how the traffic commission came to the decision of changing the signs.
Could we have Sergeant Bogner, please come up? Thank you, Councilman Rosa de Florio, for appearing. If we need you, we'll call you again. How are you tonight, Sergeant?
Good. How are you? Good evening.
Can you explain how we came up with changing the signs and what happened? And some of the butters are not aware of this sign change.
Originally, a piece was forwarded from city council last fall by a council who's no longer on the board currently. It was in October, I believe, and when our meeting came up, there was a conflict and he couldn't make the meeting. So we laid it over till December, and we discussed it again, at which time I had more information. We were told that these tractor trailers were doing pickups and deliveries, and they were getting stuck, and it was causing traffic issues. And Main Street was being blocked, Prescott Street was being blocked. People were blowing horns, knocking on doors, asking people to move. So we were looking for a solution to allow business to be done as efficiently and as quickly as possible without disturbing the neighborhood to the greatest extent possible. So we thought a compromise might be just to restrict it to weekdays during business hours, so people would be able to pack at night when they came home from work, and they'd be free on the weekend to use the space.
Did you notify any of the neighbors on the street what was going on?
We don't, we don't have a mechanism for that. Normally, that's something that the sponsor would handle. That's, that's not something that we do, no.
Councilman Dalso?
The issue here is, I grew up on Prescott Street, so I remember through the years, the trucks coming down there. Having the vehicles not parking there is bad enough. But with the vehicles not being there, they're going up on the sidewalk into the driveway. It's not just, if there's no cars there, they're not pulling down the street and backing into that driveway and doing their business and leaving. They're going up over the curb, on the brand-new sidewalk, into their driveway. So it seems to me like the cars not being there isn't really solving the problem. It's, the trucks are just too big. The solution, you know, the neighbors don't mind the smaller trucks being there backing in. There's no problem. But the tractor trailers either not be allowed to come back, or they cannot go on that sidewalk. Because they could damage the sidewalk and the driveway in possibility, hit the house that's right there.
I certainly would agree. They don't belong on the sidewalk. I don't think anyone's going to argue that. As far as their licenses, if there are restrictions and if the city can do that, I don't, I don't have a lot of knowledge on that. Maybe someone else can answer?
I don't see Mr. Rodriguez.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would think.
Could we have someone from Cappy's?
Yes, I think Cappy's should come up and explain.
Okay. Sergeant Bogner, thank you. If we need you again, you can come up and retestify.
I'd like, first, I'd like to invite the residents so they can explain all their concerns, and then Cappy's can come up after, so they can hear all the concerns. So I'd like to invite the guests from Prescott Street, if they'd like to come up and speak. They can come to the mic. And state your name and your address so they can take note. Thank you.
My name is Mary Frances Mangravidi, seven.
Hold on, please, before we do this. We would have to make a motion to open this up to the public.
Make a motion to open up to the public of Prescott Street?
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we're going to make a motion to open up to public hearing. At this point, it's seconded. It is open to public hearing. You may speak. State your name, please, and also your address.
Mary Frances Mangravidi, seventeen, Prescott Street. I live with my mother Patricia. I've lived in that house all but for the first 10 months of my life, so it's been quite a while. And for years, we've been dealing with the Cappy's trucks. It's not the small trucks, but it's the large trucks. And they're a problem for a variety of reasons. As we mentioned, public safety. They do come over the sidewalk. They've hit my fence. They've hit the tree that used to be in front of my house. I found it in the driveway. They've knocked a wire over. I believe they've hit the fence of my neighbor. They've hit Mr. Floramo's tree. The Floamo at number thirteen has been knocked into and just put up. They knock into our snowbanks. When they're trying to back in, they often take anywhere from three minutes to 20 getting in there. And that's a real problem because, you know, this is the place that the fire engines come down. And we have pedestrians on the streets. It just really, it's no place for the 18-wheeler trucks, and I appreciate they need to run their business. They've knocked into our snowbanks. We come into the snowbanks and knocked over. In the winter, there's ice on the hill coming up there. So what happens is they slide down. They can't get traction. It takes them even longer to get into the bay. Friday morning, I was working from home. We had one 18-wheeler truck in the bay. The other one was parked at the top of the street, in the middle of the street, and people had to drive practically on the sidewalk to come down because the street was blocked. You know, it just, you know, we have people, kids walking up and down. We have a legally blind gentleman who lives down the street. They're walking down. It's just a real problem. And we're very much concerned. And when the signs went up, we were completely shocked. And I know you guys have seen the pictures. We actually have tire track marks all over those sidewalks where those trucks have come in. And our sidewalks have only been up since probably the fall.
Is that a no parking, hit a corner sign?
It's a no parking in front of my house and in front of number thirteen from eight to five. And they were just put up. We heard the drills at 10:00 AM one Saturday. We couldn't believe it. And now that there's no car there, my mother's car is right next to the sidewalk. It's in danger. One day, in my living room, I looked out and there was a truck driver in the driveway at number thirteen. I could see him through my window. He knocked into the fence, and then he got mad at us because we were upset that our fence, we've had damage with no notes. It's, and we're losing the parking spaces, which for my neighbors is a hu- huge concern. My neighbor, Mr. McCabe, had one of his workers' car dragged 10 feet by a truck while the man was at work. It's a problem, and we just appreciate if somebody can help us with the problem. You know, we just need something done. We don't want any more property. We don't want kids hurt. We don't want old people hurt. We don't want any more property damage. So if any of you, ladies and gentlemen, can come up with some solution, we very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the neighborhood that would like to speak on this matter?
My name is Jack Avakey, and I live at 33 Prescott Street. And everything they said is true. They've knocked down wires on my girlfriend's house. They've hit fences. But we still, we don't want them to go out of business. It's the 18-wheelers, which we know that they could go to Medford and drop off that stuff and have a smaller straight job come down and deliver it back. I know they're trying to make a living, but it's the 18-wheelers. That's the problem. We don't mind them conducting business, but they should use just the straight jobs. And it was pretty sneaky to come down on a Saturday to put those signs up without telling anybody. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the neighborhood that would like to speak on this matter? Please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Judge McCabe. I live at 21 Prescott Street. I'm a neighbor of Pat and Mary Frances. Again, I'd just like to reiterate what both Jack and Mary Frances have said. We certainly have no trouble with Cappy's running this, what I would call a box trucks. They have two box trucks that come and go on a regular basis. Not a problem at all. They come uneventfully, for the most part. But it's the 50, 53-foot tractor trailer, 18-wheeler trucks that really present a problem on our street. You know, they, it's a very dangerous situation. And, you know, I think something has to be resolved. You know, we certainly, I know myself personally, because of my, where I park my car and my truck, that I'm in fear of the things getting hit. Not that they have any great value, but certainly, I've made it a point over the years to come down, move my, I hear a tractor truck on the street, I'll come down the stairs, get out, move my car, just to try to make it a little bit easier for them perhaps, but also the idea that I might be preventing an accident. Now, Mary Frances mentioned one, one of my workers, a few years ago, had parked his car where, right in that area where one of the signs went up. A tractor, now, we were at work at the time, a tractor going into Cappy's must have hooked the front fender of his car, pushed it back into the next driveway, John and Grace Floramo's driveway there. Okay, I, when I, I happened to, I had to come home early, 10:30 or so in the morning, mid-morning, for one reason or another. Okay, I looked, Jerry McGee was the person's name. I looked at his car, and I said, why in the hell would Jerry park over a driveway? So I looked, I looked, I walked around his truck, and there's a big gouge going in his front driver's side fender across. Now, I went up, and so I said, this has got to be something to do with Cappy's. I went up and I spoke to the shippers. Okay, and they were very receptive. And what they had said to me was, they come down, and they looked, and they said, oh, certainly was, you know, somebody that made a delivery here. So they said, we only, on that particular day, they had one delivery in the morning from some trucking outfit out of Maine. I said, well, we'll contact them and let them know. And basically, that's the last we heard of it. You know, Jerry never pursued it. You know, I said, Jerry, you know, go and talk to these people. They're pretty reasonable. I'm sure they'll, they'll do something for you. He just kind of let it slide. So that's kind of the situation which we're faced.
That's what you're going through now, okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from the neighborhood? I would also like to get rebuttal time in from Cappy's because they are in the audience. So you could state your name and your address, please.
Grace Floramo, 13 Prescott Street. There've been a lot of problems for many years, and I don't know why anything hasn't been done. And then suddenly, these signs come up, no parking. Well, where are the people that live there supposed to park? I mean, these are hours that are very important to them. The big trucks are what the problem is. I've had two trees knocked down. When they put the third tree up, they put two big metal bars or whatever, poles.
We'll call them pillars.
All right. They have been knocked down. Numerous times, they've knocked the wires down. There's no way they can make the turn. They have to come onto the sidewalk. And then they pull into my yard. We've had damage to the, not the tile, the hot top, damage to my walls, damage to the fences. And who do, what do you do? These people come from Oshkosh. You never see them again. You can't get anywhere with them. But as far as the smaller trucks, that's fine.
Okay.
And, and all that, and all, their workers even park all over the place, which takes up everything. But I think we should have been notified ahead of time that this was going on, not just have signs come up, now people look, and "Where the heck are we gonna park?", but it is very dangerous, there's a lot of kids on the street, the school is just a few blocks away, kids are always coming and going, these, there's gonna be a disaster if something isn't done about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for appearing. Um, at this point, uh, we-
Let's invite Cappys Liquor.
Actually, we gotta close public participation.
Let's close the public participation?
Seconded.
Seconded.
Motion made in second, it's a closed public participation, all those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, could we have a representative from Cappys Liquor up before us, please? Gentlemen, please state your names and, uh, corporation that you work for.
I'm Bob Selby.
You can actually come up if you want.
My name is Bob Selby, I work for Cappys. Uh, this is Mike Mannion, he's the warehouse manager. Um, like, you know, I'd just like to open, by, open up by saying that, uh, you know, we're not looking to be a bad neighbor. Uh, years ago, we had trailer trucks of our own, we don't, we don't use those anymore. The police, the police department, for, for many years, has been asking us to request the city to put up the signs for no parking for those spaces, uh, because of the problem that the trucks would get stuck on the street, they couldn't move, they couldn't turn around, they'd be stuck on Main Street. The problem is, I, you know, uh, first of all, there's no excuse, nobody should be on the sidewalk, nobody should be hitting any property, nobody should, there's no, you know, there's no excuse for that. Um, I'm not sure the best way to enforce that, but if we have to do that with other signs, or, uh, barriers, or some kind of thing, we'd be, you know, we'd be certainly open to that. Uh, the trucks, unless the driver is not a qualified driver, um, he should be able to back in with those spaces the way they are. It, the problem, most of the problem that we've had with issues and traffic tie-ups seem to have been solved by using those two parking spaces. Um, we realize this, and it's an issue, well, we don't use the big trucks, but the trucks that come to us, you know, if, when goods come from overseas in a container, they can't take it out of the container and put it in a smaller truck, it's sealed, it, you know, it has to be opened at our back door. Um, we, we can certainly do our best to request as many people that we do business with to come in with straight trucks, uh, and not the eighteen-wheelers. Um, and we could be as vigilant as we can.
Sir, uh, have you ever heard any of these complaints before? Is this the first time you're hearing these complaints?
Well, you know, we've had, we've had a, when trucks have had a knock on doors to try to get people to move cars, to get, to get issues in, and we have heard, we have, you know, we, you know, you gotta, you know, Mike has talked to the, has talked to the neighbors, and we understand that, that, that the problem is there. Uh, truthful, I wasn't aware that they were driving on the sidewalk, uh, you're probably a little more familiar with that than I am, but I'm pretty sure they don't have to, I mean, they shouldn't drive on the sidewalk, and they can back in without, without using the sidewalk.
Okay, so this isn't the first time we're hearing this, then?
No.
Okay.
But, but I say, you know, we, we seem to have not heard nearly as much about it since the no parking, the no parking signs went up on those two spots. And it really, it was at the behest of the police department that we request those to be there.
Okay. Councilman Chatter, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm the councilman in that ward, and I've got complaints from these people, and we've gotta do something for them. My thought was, you mentioned one of them, come in with smaller trucks if possible. The other thought was, that's a long building on Prescott Street, can't you open up part of that side of that wall, Prescott Street wall, and have an entrance there, so the trucks could just pull down Prescott Street and deliver straight in, rather than have them back into that alley?
Uh, well, it's not, we don't own the building, we just, we're just a tenant there, we've been a tenant there since the sixties.
Well, you must, you must be able to do some remodeling to that building, if, if you have a lease with it, you might have to, you know, whoever the landlord is, I think it's Bornstein, is it?
Yes.
Yeah. I believe he'd go along with the fact that we want to open one wall for delivery. I'm sure he'd go along with it.
I, I'm not sure exactly where that would be.
Well, your building runs from Main Street down Prescott Street for almost a city block. Uh, you could open up that side wall, so when the trucks come down Prescott Street, they park on the side of Prescott Street and make the delivery right into the side. They won't have to back into the, to the, uh, back door there. It, it probably couldn't cost you more than four, five thousand dollars, break that wall and put a door there.
I, I don't-
While I'm guessing.
Yeah, I didn't have to get a, you know, an engineer or somebody to look at that, to see if that was a possibility, and we can, we can, we can certainly look into that.
But you have to do two things, you, you've gotta stop bringing those eighteen-wheel trucks and backing in there, you can't have that anymore. You've gotta either open it up, or bring in smaller trucks, because these people just can't put up with it anymore.
Go ahead.
Respectfully, sir, uh, one of the, uh, things mentioned earlier today was working with the neighbors and trying to come to a resolution. Uh, we're thinking that those two parking spots, opening those up, is, is a step in that direction. Uh, again, we, we're in complete agreement, nobody should be driving up on the sidewalks. You know, perhaps, if, I think what we have is, you have a driver that may take more leeway than he should by going up there, but we can try to, you know, do something to stop that. I'm thinking maybe a guard rail or something along that lines. But these, uh, these parking spots, for the most part, these drivers that have been to us before, once they come down Prescott Street and they put the tractor-trailer in reverse, they can make that sweep into that ninety-degree turn into the dark area. With those two, with no cars parked there, it's much, much, much easier for them to do that. For those experienced drivers that have been there before, it's not an issue. We do have drivers that come from California, you know, for the first time, and they, when they come down that street, they having, they have a little bit more difficulty. And again, I think they're taking the path of least resistance by going up as close as they can to the house, which I'm sure left the marks on, on the sidewalks. Again, we're very sensitive to the fact that it's a new street, new sidewalks, and we're trying to do our best, you know, trying to make a stop. I know the, the neighbors are also upset, as I would be, that these signs just appeared, and that, you know, that was really beyond us. We, we were as surprised as anybody. I came in that morning, and I was gonna park under that sign, I got out of my truck, and I looked up, and I saw the sign. That was my first, uh-
Sir, I have, I have literally five minutes before we have to start our regular meeting, I have two more questions, make them brief. Uh, Councilman Simonelli?
Thank you, uh, Councilman McKinnon. What's the problem? Why can't we just ban these big trucks? Is there any way we could, through a registration, make a, we could just ban them, and you guys, if you have someplace to empty out the trucks, let's go to some other place, and empty them out.
Most busi, I, I mean, we're, we're, these are vendors that are coming to us with the product. And, you know, uh, and, and they do get in, you know, for the most part, they get in, and I, and I would have to say, for the most part, they get in without issue. You have a, a driver coming in the first time, that might have a little bit more difficulty than anybody else. But, you know, they do get in, uh, you know, and, for the most part, most deliveries are coming by tractor-trailer, or, you know, there are other locations on Main Street that get tractor-trailer deliveries. Uh, I, I don't know if it's, if that's the best solution, I mean, I, I, you know, I, perhaps there's something else that we could do, something-
I mean, you got, uh, sure, you got other locations where they could drop off there and-
But they're, they're also getting deliveries during-
I mean, you know, you guys can do that, come on.
They're, they're getting deliveries throughout the day, too, logistically.
Help me know your corporation, you can, you could break it down and put the little trucks there, you wouldn't need these big trucks. Sure, you guys can do it. I mean, it's gonna be, it'll take a little-
Let me, um-
-tendence, but maybe we can do something.
Let me answer Jack for a minute, um, we have a couple of minutes. Councilman Delisola?
Hey, um, you mentioned a guard rail, I know if I lived there, which I used to live on that street, I wouldn't want a guard rail on my sidewalk, because your drivers couldn't make it in there. Um, you know, it's not a highway to start putting guard rails up on the sidewalk. Also, a solution maybe is, if you had a spotter come out of your business, from your load and dock, come out into Prescott Street and guide him back. If he sees him going on the sidewalk, he has to stop him. If he can't make it in there without going on the sidewalk, then he's gonna pull away and find some other solution, have that product delivered. Because I don't wanna pass, stop putting guard rails up and meter post and all this, just because the driver can't make it, if he's from California, to back into the tight spots, 'cause they're not used to something like that, so... There might be a little ongoing issue here, but I think we have to make a solution real quick on these big trucks coming down here.
Councilman Delisola, also, before you, uh, rebut that, or try to debate, um, we have this on the counter for tonight, what I'm gonna suggest is, since our meeting's going to start, our regular meeting starts at seven, we have to by law have that take place, so, I ask that everyone that is on this issue stay here in the chamber, and we'll take that out of order, if that's your pleasure on the piece, uh, so that we could rehash it again.
Well, I was thinking about, why don't we lay it over to the next committee meeting, and-
It's on tonight's meeting?
Yeah, but we can have it laid over-
Okay.
In the committee meeting. No?
We have it on this meeting for tonight, our regular-
I know, but we can refer to keep it into the next meeting.
We could speak on it tonight.
Because I would make recommendations to see if they can, um, maybe see about changing, you know, trucks and come back to us, and let us know if they can, and what they can do, you know, to work with us.
Well, I would ask-
Give them a few weeks, 'cause you can't, you can't have a solution done overnight, you gotta give them a few weeks to make calls and see if they can change their trucks, they're not sure.
Why don't we make that recommendation, uh, why don't we take it off of, it's item nine on tonight's regular course of meeting, why don't we make those recommendations at that point, just so that we can get to the regular meeting? And, uh, we have time restraints because of, uh, the summer adjournment, so, um, why don't we make a motion to carry this over to the regular meeting, and then we could actually take it out of order, so that they can actually get up and speak on it again?
Okay, make a motion.
Seconded.
So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, the, I would ask that everybody that is on this, uh, item, just stay in the audience, and we will, we will continue it on when we proceed into our next meeting. This meeting, this adjourn, make a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Uh, adjourn.[1341.42]
To read the city council, come on out, clerk, roll call.
Counsel Capone, Counsel Del Sol.
Here.
Counsel De Forio.
Here.
Counsel Hanlon.
Here.
Counsel McGonigal.
Here.
Counsel McKinnon.
Here.
Counsel Napolitano.
Here.
Counsel Sichetta.
Here.
Counsel Sarni.
Here.
Counsel Simonelli.
Here.
Counsel Marquez.
Here.
Ten members present, Mr. President.
We have a corps members present. Before we start off, there's two issues I'd like to speak. Before we salute the flag, our Counsel Fred Capone will be unable to attend tonight's meeting due to family commitment. And also, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Van Campen. As you know, his son, Robert, was up here for several years as on the Board of Alderman Council, and Mr. Van Campen was also on the Disability Commission. He was a real nice guy, and a heartfelt goes out to the Van Campen family. If we could stand, please. Pleased to be in standing. Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, read the first order tonight, please.
First order of business is public participation. Hold a ten-minute participation period during this formal session of the city council.
Make a motion to open public participation.
Motion made, second to open public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, if anybody would like to get up, no, excuse me.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, we have Sandy Juliano.
I'm sorry.
Is the sign-in for public participation?
Sign it. Ms. Juliano, please.
Hi, my name is Sandy Juliano. I want to thank you all for allowing me to come here. I came tonight as one of the founding members of Everett United to remind everyone that the Gaming Commission will be at the Conley Center, formerly known as the Armory, on June 25th. That's our final chance to make an appeal to the Gaming Commission. We'd like to have a very good turnout for that event. We've started today putting out flyers, putting up, hanging them in business windows, and distributing them to neighborhoods. And we'll keep doing that for the next two weeks. But there is a public meeting, June, I'm sorry, did I say the wrong date before? June 25th.
Yep.
It starts at three. There'll be refreshments from three to four, and then the Gaming Commission will take over the meeting at 4:00 PM, and it'll go till it's over. So, if you have the opportunity to come by, please come by. Anybody that was in Everett United that wants to come back and join us again, there's a meeting tomorrow night at 5:30. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Juliano. Just to recap, make sure that if you're interested in this, it's very important to the city of Everett to be at the Conley Center at June 25th. Three to four, refreshments, four o'clock to six, the Gaming Commission will take over and speak.
Four to eight.
Four to eight.
Right.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Lucas is the next sign-in.
I'm Mr. Lucas.
Good evening. Ed Lucas, 21 Farn Dyce Street. I just want to take a minute. I don't know how many people are aware, but there's a gentleman, his name is Mark Pacelli. He's a correspondent from the Boston Globe. You know, at the end of last year, he started putting together a documentary. It's called Down the Line. It's, the title is actually, it's the breakdown of an industrial neighborhood. Mr. Matarozza was very active in the documentary, and it's, he did his homework, you know, he's, it's got nothing to do with the casino. He's neutral on the whole issue. He just did his homework, goes back to the line family, the Sweets family, all the popular people that came out of Everett, and, you know, there's all stuff from the 30s, 40s, 50s, 60s, 70s, and so on. But it was shown last month at the, it was, it was shown last month at the Everett Library. It was a full house. And it's being shown again this Wednesday, June 11th, at the Malden Library at 7:00 PM. I just wanted to put the word out if anybody could make it. And it's actually, was, if anybody seen on the Globe a couple of weeks ago, there was a write-up, you know, it had a lot of photos in a write-up about the documentary, but that's all. I just wanted, you know, to let everybody know it's this Wednesday, 7 o'clock, June 11th, Malden Library, the line documentary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions.
Does anybody like, does anybody like to, yep, just have your name and number, that the item number, your name, please.
Mary Busher, 17 Floyd Street. I saw that you were going to vote on the stretch code, and I strongly advise you to not. I think there needs to be a lot of more information for the general population, what this means for people in doing minor work on their house in the expense that it will incur. It's, it's not just green. It's, you know, I know there's a grant involved, and I don't know who that would benefit, but it's going to cost thousands of dollars to do minor things, add a window, a door. You have to fur out the walls two inches in. It'll make your room smaller. If you need a re-roof, you have to insulate your attic, and that can bring the rafters down to 16 inches, which wouldn't leave you any headroom. It would make the room useless. If it was insulated, you'd have to tear, if it was, if you had it finished sheetrock, you'd have to tear that out to insulate it. It's just, I think, it sounds like a good idea, but it's, it's a big expense, and I think a lot more information needs to be given out to the general population what this means, because it's going to be a burden forever to people, and no one's going to be happy about it.
Thank you, and I couldn't agree with you more.
Okay. I, I had one other item was about starting a do-not-knock registry. I've done research on it, and other cities and other states have it. When the door-to-door knockers come trying to sell things, they're supposed to register with the police, and that would give them the opportunity then to get the names of people who don't want to be bothered by this. Some towns do it online, where you could just register online, do-not-knock. I would appreciate it if you could look into that and maybe implement something like that for Everett.
Would you like also, no politicians to knock on your door?
You know, oddly, that, that's fine. That's kind of charming. I know it's a lot of work, and it's a good opportunity for people to get to talk. I'm talking about people selling things, not people who are representing us, but I like the politicians coming to their doors. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your participation.
Make a motion to close public participation.
Motion made, second to close public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Public participation is closed. Counsel, do we have a signing sheet?
I'd like to suspend the rules and take item number nine.
I have a signing sheet.
That would continue committee meeting?
What numbers that night?
All the people, item number nine.
Okay, item number nine.
Motion made, and second to take item number nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk, read item number nine.
Item number nine, Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety and Service. On resolution offered by Counsel Cynthia Sarni and Rosa De Forio, the Traffic Commission appeared before the Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety and Service to explain the reason for the no parking sign on the top of Prescott Street from 8 to 5 Monday Friday, invite the neighbors so they can voice their concerns.
Accept the committee report and place on file.
Motion made, second to accept the committee report and place on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have accepted the committee's report. Want to speak on the, it's over.
You've got to acknowledge me.
What? Would you like to withdraw your?
You already referred it from the meeting. That's it. We accept the committee report.
Right. Now we're going to talk about it.
On the matter?
On the matter.
Is it on the matter?
No.
Should have been spoken.
Yeah, move reconsideration, Mr. Chairman, item number nine.
Aye. Motion made, second to, to reconsider this item. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. The piece is back before you.
Mr. Chairman, can we just have the communication read, if there is one from the committee report? Is there, is there one?
It's, it's...
No, it's being written. It's being written as we speak.
We should have waited on the piece. Counsel Sarni.
Thank you. The reason why it was laid over, because we didn't have enough time in the meeting to continue on, so they asked to put this meeting down to finish what was going on in the committee. So, we have residents on Prescott Street that had concerns regarding 18-wheelers driving on the sidewalks, doing damages to their property, and also no parking signs placed. The business is here. We asked them to stay for this meeting so they can, you know, they hear the concerns. They're trying to work with the neighborhood. So, I just want to let the members here know what's going on. I'd like to make a recommendation, I'm not sure of the rest, how they feel, to give a few weeks, so the business can see about changing their trucks to smaller trucks, and also, they were going to try to also have their guys be outside.
Is this what the, is this what the communication will say?
I would like to. There's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation, okay. We should have just waited till it came out.
It didn't come out.
It didn't come out of committee. That's why she's doing it.
I'm doing it now to make recommendations.
Okay.
And then go back to committee in two weeks to have the results from this board to see what happened, if they get these 18-wheelers down to smaller trucks, and also if they can get some workers outside to direct the 18-wheelers not to go on the sidewalks.
All right, so you want, your motions are made to send it back to committee?
To keep it in committee for a few more weeks, with the recommendations for the business to give them time to see if they can change the trucks to smaller trucks, and also to have some guys out there on the trucks that they can't to direct the traffic in, and try that out for a few weeks and see how that works.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes, I would also like to recommend that. We've got a no trucking, no heavy trucking audience in the city, so I'd like to see this, ban, ban this, the big trucks from coming down, and let them get their own way to get, breaking down trucks. What are we trying to make things for? This is, the people down there, they want, they need, you know, they're taxpayers, and they don't need to have to go through all this stuff. Let the cabbies break down their trucks somewhere else, and then put the small trucks in. I'd like to make that a motion, to, to a motion to, to ban, ban trucks, 15-wheelers.
Don't do that.
Can I make a, I'll make a recommendation.
The motions you have, get a grant further time and send it back to committee.
I second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, second, grant further time, refer it back to committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It'd be sent back to, grant further time and more discussion. Okay?
Please suspend the rules and take items number 18.
Motion made, second, motion made, second, suspend the rule to take item 18. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk, read item 18.
Item number 18 is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez, who's present, to appropriate $500,000 for an Essar ref- bond for stormwater and wastewater collection infrastructure throughout the city.
If we could please invite Mr. Markart from City Services Director.
Second to motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion made to have Mr. Markart, whoever, and Mr. Viskay, who was going to give us some information on this.
Make a motion, Mr. Viskay, also.
Mr. Viskay also.
Second to motion.
Jay Markart, City Services Director.
Richard Viskay, City Auditor.
Could we please, Mr. Markart, could you please explain this to the board and the viewing audience?
Sure. The, sorry, okay, the, this program that we have, are soliciting is to get a low-interest loan to do some planning work, and as far as a certain part of the city, I guess you would call it the business triangle area, and other various parts of the city for stormwater-related concerns. The, the city has been pretty proactive the last few months with stormwater, sorry, with stormwater. We've been implementing procedures and programs to start tackling the stormwater issues that we have throughout the city. Jamie Erickson and I have found this opportunity, and we applied for it, and it was granted. And part of this process is to acquire this $500,000 from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, and it has to go through two series of approvals. It's a low-interest loan of 2% or less, I believe, and that, the funding for that would be coming out of Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, and the payments would be after the planning and program is finished.
And how long is this loan for?
We can borrow for up to 20 years.
Up to 20 years?
Yeah. So, this is a loan authorization, basically. What you'd be voting on is to allow me to authorize a bond for $500,000 using the Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust funding source. It's a 2% loan, low-interest loan, low fees.
Okay.
And this is basically an authorization for the, for the plan, planning part of this.
A 2% loan for 20 years with principal and interest is how much?
It's about $30,000 a year.
Okay. So, basically, it'd be about $2,800 a month in that area, $26, $2800 a month.
Yeah, and the, and the purpose of this is to do extensive planning and research on what exactly needs to be done to address the stormwater and wastewater issue. So, it's, may result in a, in a subsequent loan authorization for work that needs to be done, but this is for the, all the studies and the, and the planning to see what we need to address the low water levels in this particular lower triangle area of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Napolitano.
Thank you. I remember reading this last meeting, and there was a few things that kind of stuck in my head. I had to do a little research, but I understand the purpose of borrowing money and doing the studies. But since 1999, the city has actually conducted several studies regarding the storm drain. And I know we've spent in excess of half a million dollars in that amount of time. Most recently, in the last few years, there was a study. Now, what is it that this study is going to deliver that the information that's been, that's been collected already does not deliver? What's the difference?
The study, the last study that was out there was for the CSO, the, that was, I'm trying to come with the specific dates, but that was several years ago. Now, it's to identify areas of combined sewer outflow where sewer was in, was actually in the stormwater system. The other one we just conducted, it was for the, we're, we're in the final process of that. It's the Otis and Henderson area. That was TV the entire line, and we found that there was hookups into that sewer system, which as a result, we're going to be doing work. A lot of these stormwater-related funding that you see is for specific type items. This one is probably the first one that we have done, is going to be a comprehensive plan to tackle our stormwater challenges throughout the city. And it is part of the EPA requirements as far as what is expected from a community that has stormwater systems. And moving forward, it will make us more competitive down the road for other opportunities to receive grants or, or other funding sources to be able to find, to have the, you know, the capabilities to tackle these larger projects that we have down, down the road. We have, we have a neglected system, and we need to be proactive instead of being reactive as far as maintaining it and repairing it. We need to be ahead of the curve in trying to address these things.
Well, that's what's confusing me here. Each year, the past several years, we have had these studies. Are you saying there's been no attempt to do the, to act on any of these studies? And what about, what makes these current, these, these previous studies deficient that require that money to be respent all over again in its entirety?
Like I said, the, the money that was spent in the past is for specific type projects for a specific area. And more times than not, something will come out of it, like be able to identify what exactly is the problem, and then you go after, in your capital plan, a redesign for a sewer project like Otis and Henderson, what we're doing now. Sometimes the study comes back and it identifies, you know, where you have your, your connections that are illegal and a plan to tackle that. Sometimes it's just TVing the system. It's, it was all of who, at the time, wanted to, you know, what they want to get, what information they want to gather. A lot of times, from the, this type of funding source that we're getting, it's for planning, it's for design, it's for, you know, coming up with ways to identify flaws in your system or, or needs in your system, and then from there, you move on to the big, the bigger topic, like construction, and, you know.
All right. But the main question I asked is, what is different between this comprehensive study and the studies that have already been done to date? What bit of data information is, is, is this study going to contribute that we have not compiled already? Like I said, I've done some research. There's been a number of these storm drain studies done since 1999. Riegucci administration had, had sponsored a few. I can't speak for the Hanlon administration, but I also know, I know under the, under the president administration, I remember coming before us and voting to approve it. If you're telling me that these studies were created, money was spent, and nothing was acted on it, and all of that data is, for some reason, now no longer valid, that we need to respend that money again, then I have a serious problem with that.
As mentioned before, the, the specific area or the specific, I guess, the program, is the, is the business triangle, which I addressed, and it's also to look at our outflows throughout the city, where it goes into, you know, the, the outflows, where, you know, the stormwater goes into the water systems of, you know, the Malden and the Mystic and, you know, the Islanded area, the, the whole bay. It's, it's actually coming up with a plan, which has not been done holistically in the city, to tackle our stormwater challenges.
Have you, have you been able to identify from the work that's already been done, so you can focus just on the work that needs to be done?
What has been done is, I know, I know Counsel, Counsel Member Hanlon did one with the CSO's back in 2005, I believe. The one that we're wrapping up, or has been wrapped up, was last year for the Otis and Henderson area. Most of them are small, specific targets that you're going after. I believe there's one more that's out there, too, and I can't put my finger on it. A lot, this is, this is, this, I questioned what you're saying, too. Like, it's almost kind of getting the cart before the horse. You, you have to borrow money to be able to identify an item, identify the challenges, and then you come up with a plan, and from that plan, then you go and you spend the, the recommended dollars. I have not reviewed all of them, no sir.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just P. D. for your information, we didn't do any studies in my administration, we, we fixed the problems, that's, that's what we did. Okay, so, uh, I mean that as an insult, but that's what we did.
No, no, that's okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, what, um, are we looking at the whole complete city or is there a specific area that we're concerned with?
The, the lion's share is going to be the, the, um, I guess you would call it the, the other triangle, the business triangle, as, as Jamie has called it, uh, looking in the Second Street, that area, um, the, um, the market area, you know, areas that we know that there are major drainage issues.
That's the Second Street, Spring Street?
We're also going to be tying into the, like I said, the waterfront, um, portions of our outflows and, um, we're going to be looking at the, um, combined, you know, the private entity with the public, uh, utility running through it type of items.
Okay, and, um, are there many of these areas like this? Is there nine in the city or is it just really the whole complete city?
Well, like I said, the target area is going to be the triangle and it's a pretty significant area and we know, we know that there's some, some drainage issues there.
Yeah, as I'm reading the calendar, it says it's a bond for stormwater and wastewater collection infrastructure of the city. It doesn't say it's a study. Is it a study or is it to repair them?
It's a study. This, this money, I, 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 I might have spoke out of term, uh, two weeks ago. This money is for planning, study and planning, that's, that is it.
No repair?
No, no repair.
When you, when you, when you do that-
Unless it's an emerg, unless it's an emergency type situation that comes up and then we, you know, qualify.
When you do that, would you come back and let us know approximately how much it would cost to repair this, this, all these things?
That, that's the point of the study, yes sir.
Uh, okay.
Uh, Councilman McKinnon.
Uh, Mr. Markart, is there anyone from Otis and Henderson here tonight?
I do not believe so.
Okay, because I wanted to know, basically, what is their specialty? What do they do? What do they focus on?
Oh, you're talking about Beta?
Yeah.
We have, yes, we have two members of Beta.
Can we have Beta before us?
Sure.
Yes, uh.
I'd like to vote on it.
Uh, motion, has the two members of Beta come before you? All in favor?
Aye.
We have, Mary, Mary Monahan and, um, Bob Mackey with Beta Group.
Um, they, they can actually sit in your chairs and we'll re-invite you back in. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Uh, just state your name, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bob Mackey, I'm with Beta Group, I'm a senior associate there.
And I'm Mary Monahan and I'm also with Beta Group and I'm an associate.
Well, thank you, Nick. Uh, Councilman McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, uh, what is the specialty for Beta Group? What do they look into? What do they do specifically, um, that we're trying to do here with this amount of money?
For, for this project here, it's, it's primarily looking at stormwater and Beta is an expert in stormwater. Uh, we handle all aspects of, of environmental engineering from, from water supply, sewage, CSOs and stormwater. Uh, this, this project is going to be focused on stormwater, identifying areas that have had issues, uh, that are outside of the previous studies. There have been, as Mr. Markart indicated, there were other studies that have been, uh, done to address specific areas. This is going a little bit beyond there to look at the, uh, the triangle area, in particular in the Village area, uh, to find out how stormwater can be mitigated, how best to position the city moving forward. There's going to be more regulations coming out, uh, pretty soon. This report will help, uh, position the city, um, effectively to deal with those regulations as well as to, uh, deal with, uh, climate change. It opens up some opportunities potentially for, uh, community development, um, so things along those lines. Did you want to add to Mary?
Okay, so speaking specifically to the opportunity that you have in front of you right now and, Councilor, you acknowledged that there have been previous studies done and we're going to be building off of those studies. For example, you recently had, UMass did a climate change impact study. Part of the recommendations included focusing on this district to make sure that the residents, especially the commercial property owners in the district, had enough information to be proactive in protecting their assets, which in your case is also your tax base with respect to rising stormwaters. And also, because of those previous studies, we know that a third to a half of the storm drains in the city actually converge in that one area. So, one of the objectives of the study is to take that pressure off of that particular area and find other opportunities throughout the city to either, um, retain, detain, whatever, infiltrate back into the ground, the stormwater, so to, to, to remove that burden in that particular commercial area, which is a major focus for both economic development and tax revenues. And the other opportunity within this is, is when we do find illegal connections and that's one of the major focuses, is to make sure that what's flowing through your storm drains is stormwater, that it's not wastewater, that it's not other types of contaminated water being discharged from industrial operations. And this will be an opportunity, when those are uncovered, to actually get some funding to remediate those. So, so it's, it is a study, but when we find a problem, those problems will be remediated and corrected. And at the end of the day, what you'll end up with is a plan that is going to prioritize based on the best impact, based on, you know, where are we going to reduce those flooding impacts? Where are we going to have the best opportunity to clean up water and what's the cost associated with that? And this, this planned study remediation action is also going to be the basis of future funding opportunities. With a plan, you can go to EPA, you can go to Mass DEP, you can go to Coastal Zone Management and you can say, "We have a plan that we want to push forward and we need some funding assistance to do that." So, while the target area is that Triangle District, the reality is, because of the fact that that Triangle District receives a drainage of up to a half of the city, it, it actually will have an impact citywide.
So, my, my other question on that is, this is that, now on the opposite end of the city, will that be looked at as well?
We, we, the budget is 500,000 and what, when the city applied last year for the funding with a, what's known as a project evaluation form, the, the overall project was not described in specific detail. So, this is our opportunity, when the city council approves this, to sit down with the city and work with you to prioritize where do you really need to go. We have to stay true to what the original language was, which was a focus on this area, but we can also work with Mass DEP to build off of that area and to work into the final scope of work, that plan and that priority that the city has.
Will this actually give us the opportunity to become a, a greener city per se and also to have the grant opportunities out there for a green city?
Well, the Green Communities Program?
Yes.
Um, this is going to help, but you, there are five elements to Green Communities Program and those are the key to that success.
What are those five?
Well, one of them was, I just heard, a little stretch code.
Yes.
Okay, so, so that, that's one of the key elements. Another element would be making sure that your city vehicles are all, to, to the best extent, practical, um, energy efficient. Another is a larger developments, larger construction projects, not household, not homes, you know, need to incorporate some energy efficiencies into their design. You need to develop a target for reducing energy usage over the next, I believe it's five to 10 years of about 10, 15, 20%, and, and kind of have a written plan to make that happen. And then to, um, if an energy-efficient commercial or industrial operator wants to set up home in the city of Everett, you know, make sure that the, the permit review process is expedited as quickly as possible, still being responsible to the zoning that's in place. So, those are basically those five elements. So, so this will fit one of those planned elements as far as you're going energy efficient. One more thing to add to that is, any of the recommendations identified with respect to infrastructure improvements that include energy efficiency, that include, um, uh, stormwater remediation and climate change impacts, position you for the next phase of funding. Instead of a low-interest loan, you could potentially be eligible for what's known as, um, principal forgiveness, AKA a grant.
For the grants?
Yes.
Um, my last question, that's brief, uh, what other projects have you worked on that are comparable to this or larger?
Um, well, I've been doing stormwater work since 2003, um, and just quick background, I'm not an engineer, I'm a former DPW director, town administrator, municipal treasurer. So, these programs, we make sure approach the city in a comprehensive way. It's not just an engineering project, it's a citywide project that incorporates all of that. So, I, I've worked in numerous cities, um, I've been part of, uh, planning full, full grants and full programs and then going out and doing the inspection. 2003 was when the program first started, the Nipody's Permit Program, so most of the work goes back to 2003. Um, right now, you're pending a permit, as are all the other Nipody's regulated communities that will be issued according to EPA probably in the next six months, so this is the next round of that. So, I've written about eight stormwater programs.
Reason being why I ask that question is because we want to know why we're spending 500,000 on this and, uh, which projects that you've worked on before prior and?
Do you want the specific communities?
Yes.
Okay, I, I've worked in Lunenburg, I've worked in Templeton, I've worked in Gramby, I've worked in Blackstone, I've worked in Nor, um, Norfolk, um, I've worked part of, um, added some in, in, into the Boston Water and Sewer when they did part of their program, which was mostly focused on the, on the wastewater side of it. I have at least seven, I hope I thought of them all.
All right, thank you very much.
And wait, and Beta, this is me personally, but Beta is working in-
Council, we have three, uh, three active stormwa, uh, very similar programs, one in Fall River, one in Randolph, one in Needham and, and Ton, did I say Ton?
Ton, no.
Those, those are the four active-
Those are currently now?
That are going on actively right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, Councilman Summely.
Yes, uh, and Mr. Markart, please, we invite him back.
Well, thank, um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Well, excuse me, hold it, we have more questions for the, uh, the, uh, Councilman Hanlon.
I've always had this question in the back of my mind, you know, it's not, it's just not just sewage and rainwater that gets, gets put together. I'm looking like, what we would do about runoff from a, uh, like, like the SO property, I don't know if they, large trucks go in there, they fill up with oil, they come out, uh, that oil is not, and I'm not talking about the stuff that drips on the street, I'm talking about the stuff that leaches out of their property. Is there anything that you guys can do about that? I mean, maybe, you know, put an oil-water separator on their property, tell them that they have to do it? So, what I'm saying is, you know, yeah, in your study, can you command these people to do that?
We can certainly look at that, you know, so it is a concern, it's definitely part of a stormwater plan-
Right.
-when you have those types of releases.
Right, okay, and one other question is that, could you give us, if we do this with you folks, could you give us like a quota report? One piece of paper?
Absolutely.
You don't have to give us copies, we'll make our own copies, I don't want to put any more expenses on here, you know?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Would they be, excuse, Mr. Chairman, with customary thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Markart, um, Mr. Viskey, Councilman Summely?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, to you, uh, Mr. President, to, uh, uh, Mr. Markart. Studies, 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 when will they ever end? They got this study going, they got the high school, uh, but anyway, I mean, this seems like we had enough of these studies, but how long would this study take?
About a year and a half.
And is, by doing this study, are we going to get something concrete stuff that it's going to really move on it this time instead of like the other ones that we just waste?
If we don't, Beta's fired. If we don't, Beta will be fired.
You are, well, I'd just see a fire, but, uh, it could happen. And one other thing I just want to make, that, for is that, that, um, the, these, uh, this 500,000, I mean, don't we, do we have people in-house that could do this job? I mean, we got, we got, uh-
No.
We have no one that could do this. And we know the areas, we know it's down Second Street in the Village, we know where they are. Can't we just, you guys go down there and dig another hole and fix it?
No.
Why, why not?
We're, we're not equipped to do that, we don't even have a PE amongst our staff.
I don't, I don't know if I'm for it, okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Hanlon. Oh, excuse me, uh, Councils Satchela, I believe I had you, uh, before.
Yeah, um, a couple of questions, um, I believe it was last, two years ago, when I was on the Board of Alderman, we appropriated a half a million dollars, I believe, for the water and storm drain down on Beecham Street that the pipe had collapsed and so on and so forth. And I think there was a study at that time for that money, was there not?
I'm going to have Jamie Erickson, the, um, Community Development Director, uh, speak on it.
Motion to invite, uh, Jamie Erickson.
Motion to invite, uh, Mr. Erickson up, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Mr. Erickson, just your name, please, and your-
Sure, uh, Jamie Erickson, Director of Planning and Development, uh, believe, just so I'm sure about your question, you asked about appropriating-
Didn't, didn't we appropriate a half a million dollars for the Beecham Street collapsed pipe for storm drains and so on and so?
Correct.
And we're going to do some kind of a study on that also?
Well, the, the appropriated money was, I believe what you're referring to is the culvert issue that's down-
Yeah.
-near Beecham Street in the Market Terminal area. And that half a million dollars only went for that, basically the, to fix the collapsed drain issue. There was no money left over from that to do anything else and actually, the money that was appropriated couldn't even completely fix the issue. So, if you go down there today, it's actually an open-air culvert in the middle of a big parking lot. So, part of what we need to understand with the funding that we have is really coming up with a long-term sustainable fix for our entire storm drain system. As Beta mentioned and as, as Jay has mentioned, a lot of our storm drain system runs into that exact culvert that you talked about and we want to try to lessen the demand on that culvert system and also come up with a much bigger picture of master plans that we understand how can we more sustainably and more cost-effectively manage stormwater in the city of Everett.
And for Mr. Viskey, I understand we're going to borrow this money at a small rate of interest from the Mass Water Resource Authority and, let me continue with the question. And this bond will be paid for through the Enterprise Department, Water Enterprise, therefore, it'll be in the water bills, is that correct?
Pretty much, it's just the, the Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust is a different entity than the MWRA, so it's, um, you got the right idea, it's just a different entity that, that lends money for these particular projects, it's MWPAT, not MWRA, but the rest of what you said is correct, it'll be approximately 30,000 a year payment that would be Enterprise Fund budgeted and, uh, paid for through that, so.
It'd be in the water rates.
It'll be paid for through, uh, water rates.
Water, thank you.
Councilman Hanlon. Actually, just to follow up on what, uh, my fellow council is saying, if the, if we're going to charge this to the, uh, Enterprise Fund, didn't the Enterprise Fund wind up in the red last year?
The Enterprise Fund didn't end up in the red last year.
It did.
We, um, yes.
So, are we expecting to make a lot of money on the Enterprise Fund?
We're expecting to end the year in a positive fund balance for fiscal year 2014, correct? I'll, I'll have specifics to that once we have, uh, we close our books and we have the power revenue come certify our retained earnings, which is the free cash of the Enterprise Fund, so to speak.
So, then we're still looking for, besides breaking even, you're looking now for another 30,000 on top of that to pay off this loan, if we take this loan out?
Well, it, it would be budgeted as an appropriation for debt service and then we'd have to ensure that the revenues that come in through the Enterprise Fund would support the expenditures that are made through appropriation process, so, yeah, but 30,000 in a 15 million dollar operation is somewhat of a modest amount.
Okay, I know, I know you will, but I, I'd like to keep abreast of that and I know you'll let us know how that's going.
Absolutely.
I know you will, thank you.
Uh, if, if I may, um, from the chair, just a couple of questions I'd like to ask. By appropriating this money and assuming what we did in that culvert, do we assume responsibility for that culvert, the city of Everett, to do the whole culvert?
With regard to the appropriation?
The culvert that last year that we appropriated money to do, do we assume the responsibility for that culvert?
I'm, I'm not going to answer that part.
Okay, you probably wouldn't know, you would have, but, um, Mr. Markart, you would have, but, Mr. Erickson would probably know because I believe-
I'm familiar with it, but I, I think what, just to clarify the first part, would you be, you would be authorizing the treasurer to borrow up to 500,000 for the study?
Well, I know about the study, we, that was, uh, explained, uh, to us, but I'm saying, last year, we did work on a culvert and there's still, the water's still backing up on Second Street. So, we spent a half a million dollars there, so I don't know where the half a million dollars went, because it's still backing up. But, so, are we assuming the responsibility, because they're definitely going to go down there and find there's a problem there, who's going to pay for it? I know the market's not going to pay for it, so are the taxpayers in the city of Everett going to pay for it?
Um, what, what you're asking is, um, I believe is still being discussed in, amongst legal entities that are involved.
Well, that, that's a big discussion, so I just hope before you, uh-
And the work that we did was merely an emergency, um, posing imminent, uh, danger to the surrounding area and they needed to do a quick fix.
And why didn't the market assume any responsibility for it? Are we going to assume responsibility for the rest of it? Is that's, that's, I thought it was a bad precedent, what we did, we, as far as, you know, putting the city of Everett on the, the hook for the millions of dollars it would cost to fix that? Now, that's just one of- Now, that's just one of my concerns, and second of all, the Enterprise Fund, I didn't vote for it because I know where it would lead on this, because I know it would be paid for it through taxes and through the people's water bills, I was never a big fan of it. Um, I mean, if we're going to do studies, and it's going to cost us and assume the responsibility and liability of the produce, which we've been here 20 years trying to figure out how to do it, and no one's assumed liability for it, I mean, that's, that's a tough sell for me to vote yes to go study to say it needs to be done, we know it needs to be done, but who's gonna pay for it? If it's the city of Everett, I don't think it should be, that's just my take on it, and if there's no more questions, like the, you know, excuse both of yous, thank you very much. Matters before you?
I second the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I like the motion that refer this to Ways and Means, I still think there's more information that needs to be, uh, needs to be delivered to us, I have concerns about the amount of monies that have been spent on the, on the previous studies, and the fact that we're gonna be spending money, I'm not 100% convinced that the, that some of this money isn't being allocated for studies that have already been done, and I'd like to be more confident for that before we go ahead and vote.
Uh, we had a motion made for favorable action, was it second?
Not second, I'm on the referral.
Oh, it wasn't second, okay, so the first motion, it wasn't second?
It was second.
Who seconded it?
The referral is always first.
I understand that committee of meetings have more presence over the...
Okay, so, do you, uh, decline your second?
Yes.
Okay, so, we said on the second, so we have a second on the motion to refer, motion to refer to Ways and Means, motion made and second to refer to Ways and Means, on the roll call vote?
Yes.
I'm referring to Ways and Means. Counsel Delasola.
No, we're voting.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
No.
Counsel Haanlin.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
No.
Counsel McKinnon.
No.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichella.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
No.
Counsel Summely.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Six yeas, four nays.
Uh...
Mr. President.
Uh, the motion, the referral has passed, it'll be sent to the Ways and Means Commission. Committee.
Mr. Stone, a sign?
Do you have a sign, Counsel Florio?
I have a...
I, I think we may have left something else I want to find out, if we need to find it out tonight, so therefore we'll move reconsideration on our last vote.
I second the motion.
Motion made second to move reconsideration, all in favor?
Yes.
A voice vote, please.
On reconsideration, Counsel Delasola.
No.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Haanlin.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel DePalatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichella.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Summely.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes. Uh, Counsel Haanlin?
Nine nays, one nay. Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we invite Mr. Viskey back.
Motion made second to invite Mr. Viskey back, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, Mr. Viskey?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Viskey, in the interest of gathering more information, I saw your signal, so I would like to ask if you can add to this.
There is one bit of important information that was left out of the conversation, is that this particular MWPAT program, which we wish to borrow the money for at a favorable rate, there is a deadline of June 30th on getting the authorization to borrow this money, so while you could put it in Ways and Means and discuss it further, I would urge you strongly to come out of that committee before the 23rd of, uh, this month to either vote up or down on it, and, um, I understand there's probably many questions to answer, and perhaps in the Ways and Means would be a good way to vet that out, however, this is a time-sensitive authorization, so I just thought the council should know that, and, um, again, happy to try to answer any further questions, I know there's some concerns, but this is an opportunity we may not want to miss on, uh, at least the authorization of the borrowing, so that's all I wanted to make a point of.
Counsel Florio.
Mr. Chairman, this was in front of us two weeks ago, so we did have two weeks to ask some questions that we were concerned about, and we were told there was a deadline at the time, and we were told to send it to committee then, so that all the questions would be answered and it would come out today. So what happened is, we chose not to send it to committee, and we chose to vote on it because under the new charter, you can't vote the same night, so now this is a time-sensitive material, and it's really not fair, because we have had two weeks to do the research on this, so that's my opinion.
Uh, Counsel McKinnon.
What would the, what would the rate change from that rate, that number two, to the rate that it's not allowed?
We'd just be subject to the market, so we'd sell our bonds on the open market and that rate could change, but this is a particular program designed for this type of study, and it's a subsidized rate through the MWPAT, so...
And what is that rate again?
Two percent.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Palatano.
Like I said, I, I, and I'm not looking to hold anything up, but the thing is that if we're constantly having these things come up where there's a deadline, and we really don't get the information we need to be able to make a, a educated decision, then I don't believe we're serving our constituents properly. I think that, you know, if, there has been money spent in the past, I've been trying for a week and a half to get, to get some details on it, and other than, other than looking up old information, it's, it's, has not been easy, uh, I would really feel more comfortable, and I'm not trying to cost the city, cost us any money, but the thing is, I also don't want to see the city spend money that's already been spent if it can be avoided, you know, we all have concerns in this, in this chamber about the upcoming budget hearing, there's only a handful of us here who will remember when the budget first went over $100 million, and how shocked we were then, now we're looking at, at a significantly larger amount, I just think that we need to be on top of this, you know, if there's a deadline involved, then, then, then we need to address that, and we need to get our information, you need to get the information to us quick enough for us to be able to make that decision, but I, I've got concerns, and, and the thing is that, where I've been asking about whether or not the, what this study itself lends to the overall, I haven't still been able to feel like I've gotten an answer that I'm comfortable with.
Have you asked any?
You know, I'd rather see the money spent on what we need than on something that we were gonna redo.
Who did you ask for this information that you didn't receive it from? I'd be curious, because I didn't get a call.
I've looked through, I've looked through...
I just wonder who you asked, if you asked anyone in my particular office?
I've checked in the engineering department, these studies have been done before, I remember voting on these studies in the past, and that's why I'm concerned...
So you've asked the questions, and no one's, no one's delivered you anything?
No, I'm concerned with what the diff, what this...
You said you asked somebody, Counsel, that's what I'm asking.
If I could, please, I'm trying to answer your question, and the answer is, the same, and I asked the same question that I asked twice, and don't feel like I got the, the answer I needed, what does this study lend that we have not already acquired in previous studies? And I got, we got, the answer was talked around, I'm not comfortable that it was a straight enough answer.
With all due respect, I don't think we got the question.
That's why, and based on that alone is the reason why I'd like to see this in committee.
With all due respect, I don't think we had that question asked of us between the last meeting and this one.
Actually, if you're watching, you'll ask, I asked twice during this meeting, Mr. Markhardt, what the difference in the study was, and I got a lot of explanation that I already knew, but I didn't get the answer I was looking for. Okay, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to protect the taxpayers' monies, and whether it's coming in the tax, or it's a loan, it's still taxpayers' money.
I think we're all trying to protect the taxpayers' money, Counsel.
I'm not, I'm not insinuating you're not, but I also want to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
My purpose was just to tell you that this is a time-sensitive nature, I can debate the merits of your questions, but at this point, I just want to let everyone know that we have a time-sensitive issue with regard to this particular bond.
Can we pass this before our next meeting and still fall under your deadline?
Again, if you put it in Ways and Means and there's some kind of action that comes out of Ways and Means before the 23rd meeting, you act upon it, I would suggest, yes, and I'd make another suggestion that if you're not gonna take any action on a particular money order, you would just put it directly into committee so that we can come before that committee and answer the question, so that when you come back to your next meeting, we're able to act on it, because we kind of put this off for two weeks without, to my knowledge, any direct questions asked of me or anybody else who may be able to help you, therefore, we're back before you in two weeks, and we're really not able to be efficient with the process, so, again, I've spoke to you and everyone else before, my door's open, my email's available, ask me any questions you'd like, and I'll, and I'll be happy to get your answers.
Thank you.
Counsel Delasola.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes, could we have Jamie come up? Maybe he could answer the question, Counsel, ahead.
Sure, um, thank you for calling me up, I just wanted to maybe try to clarify some of the discussion going on, I know there's been lots of studies in the past, and Jay mentioned a couple, and I'm, and I'm also aware of the vast amount of studies on the culvert issue by CDM, um, a lot of what this study and what this funding will allow us to do is look at all those studies that have been more site-specific, but look at the system as a whole, which we haven't done, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, so what Beta mentioned that they're gonna be doing is they're gonna be taking into account all those past studies, but bringing it into the larger context of the system as a whole, so that we can have a best approach to tackling all of these individual problems that we've done studies on, but we've never done a study as a system as a whole, so I think that goes to a little bit of, hopefully clarifying some of the concern or some of the question as to, are we trying to reinvent the wheel here, have we already spent money on this? The big answer is no, we have not spent money on looking at the system as a whole, we've looked at individual components of the system, such as the culvert at, um, on Spring Street, such as the other individual culverts, but we haven't really addressed, will that actually solve our issues of stormwater citywide? So I just wanted to clarify that.
Do you have any more questions?
Will be excused, a gentleman with customary thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, I'll come back up.
Uh, for a little information here, I just spoke to, um, Mr. Burley, and he informed us, says we have, we have budget next week, so if you don't have Ways and Means, it's gonna have to be sometime this week, we start budget next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, so you may have to make a vote on it tonight.
Fable action on the order?
Second.
Motion made second for favorable action, clerk, roll call vote.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Haanlin.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichella.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Summely.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Eleven nays, zero nays, Mr....
Eleven nays, zero nays, the piece has passed.
Okay.
You want to go, time? Clerk read, what's the next piece?
Item number five, please.
Clerk read item number five, please. Motion made to suspend the rules, take item number five, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, clerk read item five.
Item number five is an order sponsored by Counsel Marquez, his president, to grant a petition from the city of Everett for a special license permit to serve two alcoholic beverages being wired per ticket holder at the city of Everett Paint Night fundraiser be held Friday, July 18th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Collage Center, proceeds to benefit the city's fire victims fund, the order will take effect upon the granting of a special permit from the licensing board.
I have a sign-in sheet from Allison Delasola, if anybody has any questions, I recommend favorable action on the order.
Second.
Chairman, on the motion?
Uh, excuse me? Mr. Chairman, on the motion?
Uh, Counsel Haanlin.
I just want to know what a paint night is.
Uh, actually...
We're all gonna paint.
Someone sets it up, you make a donation, paint.
You actually paint on canvas?
You gotta paint on canvas, Joe.
Yeah, she always invited me to over his house to paint already, and I don't know, I don't want to get caught in that, you know, but is it, is it a...
It's actually, it's a fundraising thing, you, a lot of bars and restaurants have, when you go and they give you a canvas and you just paint, you know, it's a good way to spread the...
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll get discovered.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion before us, or do we need...
Favorable action.
Motion made second for favorable action, roll call vote.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Haanlin.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichella.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Eleven nays, uh, ten nays, zero nays, Mr. President.
Uh, yes, the, the...
A motion to take item...
The order has passed, and I'd good luck raising our money at it.
Items number 11 and 18 collectively, please? We already did 18, I'm sorry, 11.
Motion made to take item 11, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, clerk read item 11.
Item number 11 is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez, his president, to authorize establishment of revolving funds for FYI 2015, is listed and described as the following departments, fire chief, school committee and special services, health director, city services, human services, recreation, and veterans.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made second, um, we'll, um, we'll call vote.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Haanlin.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichella.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Summely.
Yes.
Ten nays, zero nays, Mr. President.
Uh, the order has passed.
A motion to take item number two.
Motion made to...
I'm gonna press record, please.
Was it, which ones?
Mr. Chairman.
Motion made to take...
Item number two.
Item number two, and 23 collectively, all in favor? Are you opposed?
No, 23.
But with...
I don't want them collectively.
Case we have a no against on that, so we...
Item number two is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez, his president, to petition the great general court to remove the position of fire chief of civil service law due to the lack of interest in fire chief's exam over the past few years, prepare for when the position of fire chief eventually opens, does it not affect the current fire chief status in any way?
Matters before you?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this...
Counsel Haanlin.
Although I know what, what's going on with this one here, this appears to me Although I know what's going on with this one here, this appears to me to be a violation of our charter, in that section 10-5 was the disposition of certain laws that we carried forward into our new charter, and section 86, Acts of 1933, regarding the Fire Chief. So we have put that in our charter, that that will not be removed, you know, changed or anything like that. So by asking the state law, I mean the civil service law, to reject it, it's still a violation of our charter. So we're violating our own charter by asking them that. Unless we, the only thing we could do now is to make a charter change. Well, we could still make a charter change.
Please, don't speak out of order, please, Mr. Hanlon.
And just that state law supersedes, but state law does not supersede, because the fact of the state, our charter is by state law.
Counsel DeFlorio.
We have to vote. No, we have to vote to invite.
Yeah. Motion made to invite the city's solicitor up. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Good evening, everyone. I respectfully disagree with Counsel Hanlon's interpretation of that provision of the charter. The purpose of that part of the charter was to recognize and retain individual pieces of special legislation that were passed on behalf of the City of Everett. It does not say that they need to be retained in perpetuity, and lots of pieces are passed and repealed, they have been through history, and it seems to be, would be against public policy to say that the City of Everett could not, at any point, repeal a piece of special legislation simply because it was retained as part of the charter. The charter is unclear as that, and I don't see any conflict at all.
Mr. Chairman, I certainly do, and I believe that it is a violation for us to change any part of our charter. Any word in our charter is a violation. We're violating our own charter to change anything at all, and by doing that with civil service, we're taking that out of our charter. So we'd have civil service that would say one thing, and our charter says another thing. And I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel. That's the way I interpret it.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes, I think we ought to take a vote, favorable or unfavorable, and then we take a motion to, you know, maybe we have the vote, to vote against it before we have any discussion on it. And we're wasting a lot of time in discussion.
We can't vote on this according to our charter tonight anyhow. So we can read... But you get, have communication to a discussion on it here tonight, and refer it to the next meeting. Our committee. Okay, Counsel Sichetta, are you through?
I'll rescind my motion.
Okay, Counsel McKinnon.
Just for clarification, does our charter supersede state law?
Does our charter supersede state law?
Do the provisions of the charter supersede state law?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
They don't. The charter can be more restrictive than state law, but if there's a conflict that says, if there was a direct conflict between the charter and state law, where they came in direct conflict, the state law would supersede every time.
It prevails, correct, over our charter.
Yep, every time.
That's for clarification for all the members here tonight.
You're forgetting that our charter is also state law.
Exactly. Does this right here, will this supersede anything in our charter by state law, if we do this tonight? Or actually not do it tonight, but at another later date vote?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
If we were to vote to do this at a later date, at another meeting, would this supersede state law, if we were to change our charter by this?
No. The passage of the piece doesn't, wouldn't affect the charter at all. You're only petitioning, it would only, any hypothetical conflict of the charter, which I don't believe exists, would only exist when the bill itself was passed into law and signed by the governor. So passing this, the passing of the piece of legislation doesn't create any conflict at all.
Okay, but now we're mentioning 10-5.
Yep.
All right, now, what is 10-5?
10-5 outlines certain laws that are retained, repealed, and retained in part, specific to certain employees and certain specific acts.
And do we have the right to actually change this under civil service law now?
This, the charter, my interpretation of this is that this is the snapshot at the time the charter was passed, and you could look, and if you can just give me one second. It's simply saying that they're recognizing and they're retaining the laws that are, that were in existence at the time of the charter. It doesn't say that you can't repeal them out of course. So in order, if the language was clear, and says that they're retained in perpetuity, then it would restrict us from being able to do it, because that doesn't, that language isn't there. They were retained at the time of the charter, the laws existed.
So it's a carryover from...
It's a carryover from that. It's, there's no language saying that you cannot seek special legislation to repeal any of the special acts.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Palatano.
Thank you. Now, with this order, if we eliminate the Fire Chief from the civil service exam, and I understand this doesn't affect the existing chief. It's preparation, again, reading right out of the language, preparation for when that position comes open. What's the, how is the qualifications determined for the next Fire Chief at that point, if not through the civil service?
I defer that specifically to Bob Dion, who's the head of Human Resources, who would be part of that process, but it would be, it would be very similar to the selection of the police chief, I assume, if that's a question for Bob.
If I could make a motion to invite Mr. Dion.
Motion made second to invite Mr. Dion to the Kirby Couch. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, good evening. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. So currently, the way it works now is each year we petition for a promotional exam. Over the past four years, I think this is the fifth year, we've had nobody put in to take the exam for the Fire Chief. Therefore, each time it opens up to, the first year opens up to deputy chiefs, the next time opens up to captains, then lieutenants, and down to privates. So, you know, the interest isn't there. It doesn't appear to be there for our promotion. This way, it kind of gives the appointing authority the ability to look at qualifications, look at, other than just what a test score reads, and so that's part of the reason why we want to do this.
Is this circumstantial, is that happening statewide, or is it, you're just talking about the City of Everett?
Just the City of Everett, I mean, it varies.
Could it just be possible that the firemen respect their leadership and don't feel the need to challenge, to go for that position?
But it's not going for the position. You don't, you're not challenging. Basically, it's, you know, you take the test, you get on a list, and when the Fire Chief retires, we call for a new list, and whoever's on top of the list would get, it's not like a challenge or anything like that.
Right, but also the expectation is not that the chief is going to retire in the near future, that we're aware of, is that correct?
No, that's incorrect. You know, it could happen next year.
Why, I know it could happen anytime.
Yeah, yeah. It could happen anytime. And if it does happen, we would temporarily appoint somebody, or the appointing authority would temporarily appoint somebody, and then we would call for a test. Now, this test would be opened up to privates, so we could have a private firefighter, you know, score high enough on the exam and be considered for the chief's position.
Okay, but that would also show by scoring high enough on the test that they've got the qualifications, at least the educational qualifications.
It approves that they're a good test taker, but they're not probably qualified as a private firefighter to be the Fire Chief for the City of Everett.
And just one last question, and I'm not sure if this is even appropriate, but have you did any questionary studies or maybe any focus groups with the firemen to find out why there appears to be this lack of interest?
We actually did reach out to the fire union and had a meeting with them, put them on notice that we were going to be petitioning for this, and, you know, I guess, you know, it can cost upwards of $1,000, $2,000, between everything to take the test. So I'm just not sure if it's a financial thing or what, but, you know, this is the fourth year in a row, which is a little bit concerning, especially, you know, in talks of potential retirements for the current Fire Chief.
All right, thank you. Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. Palatano, you too, Mr. Chairman. But I don't think by eliminating the civil service, you're putting this job back into a political job, and it's going to be important by the mayor. Now, but this is, you got guys down there, they've worked 30 years, they're looking to take this test. So you're going to get rid of that, and these men worked all these years to get this position. Now you want to, you want to get it out and have a political job.
No, no, it's not like, no.
Now, you're not going to put a man in there, you can put anybody in.
You could, but I don't, I think, you know, he obviously wants to put people who are already in-house, like that's his goal, is to put somebody in-house.
He doesn't have to do that.
Oh, no, he doesn't have to, you know.
But I don't think this is a good thing to get rid of in the civil service. I think, Mr. President, can we make a motion to put this into committee and have Chief Butler up here at our next committee meeting? Would you like to make that motion?
Yes, you can. After discussion, after discussion.
I think there's some more questions. I make that motion to...
Should we have a few more questions to come back? Counsel McGonigal.
Just very brief, gentlemen, thank you. Through the chair, you mentioned that they take the, because I'm not familiar with this. You regurgitated me on this part of it, and I never knew. Glad Counsel Hanlon brought this up, but so they take the civil service exam for the chief's position, and they score high on that. That still doesn't necessarily, you said, consider them, or they get that job. So if that's the case, why are we eliminating it? To open it up to other candidates? Do you think it'd be a larger group? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
Well, basically what it does is, it allows us to look at more than just a test score. I mean, in order for us to bypass, it takes, it takes a lot. We can bypass based upon qualifications, but you have to have a good reason for doing it. And I think if one person takes the exam, and if they, if two people take the exam, one passes it, then really, we don't have a choice. We have to really either keep temporarily appointing, or, you know, make that person the permanent chief. I mean, so, you know, we could have four people take the test, and nobody pass, and if nobody passes, then we just keep reappointing, because you just can't, you know, you have to pass the test in order to be put on the list. So I mean, it's just a little concerning that we don't have any interest. If we've had interest in the past, it would be, you know, it would make us feel a little bit more comfortable, but like I said, you know, one person passes, it could be, it could be a lieutenant, and that person could be qualified to do the job, but they might not be. And if they're not, it handcuffs us to, to put somebody in there who's not qualified to do the job. And, you know, it's just, I've seen, I've seen it in other communities where, yeah, I mean, I've seen captains go from captain to chief, you know, but to see like a lieutenant or a private go from that rank to a chief, it's, it's pretty much unheard of. But we're just a little concerned with the lack of interest in the cancellation of the exam for the past four years.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Counsel DeFlorio, wrap this up, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We can't vote on this tonight anyways. It has to be referred to our next meeting, or it has to be referred to committee. So if we're not sure, I'd rather refer it to committee, instead of referring it to the next meeting, and then refer it to committee.
Yep.
Counsel Simonelli had recommended that. But how important is it to pass this right away? Because we have budget hearings coming up, then July and August, there's no meetings, not that we can't call them, but...
No, the issue is, is the legislative session, in that that ends on July 31st. So in order for us, if we, if we want to get this to be in consideration for the general court, it would need to be before them sooner than later.
Okay, and if we don't do that, then the deadline would be next July, is that correct?
No, it would have to be refiled in January, it's part of the next session of the general court, and then it would have two years to the next July 31st, or the next even year to be passed.
Okay, so basically, we want to get this done before July?
31st, so just so we could wait another two years in order to do that, and that might defeat the entire purpose of doing it.
Okay.
Counsel Simonelli, you have the first motion there.
My motion was to refer this to...
Motion made, excuse, thank you.
My motion was to refer this to the Committee on Public Safety and Public...
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
And invite Chief Butler and, anybody else we need to invite?
The union rep.
Oh, union rep, okay. Are you looking for anybody else? Anybody got any ideas? Anybody else? That's good.
Motion made second to refer this to the...
When the right parties are showing up.
Motion made second to refer this to the Public Service, Public Safety Committee, and ask for Chief Butler, and also the union rep to come before us. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yep.
Do you have anything before us? Do you have anything before us?
Item number 23, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made second to, no, everybody did. Motion made second to read item 23.
Item number 23, resolution sponsored by Counsel Stephen Simonelli and Counsel John Lee McKinnon, Mayors District Solicitor, respectfully requested, to attend this meeting to explain why no opt-out provision, if no compliance will shut off your water with the Ganso Water Meter radio frequency device.
Counsel Simonelli.
Mr. President, could we take number 22 and 23 collectively and make a motion to lay it on the table to our next meeting, July 23rd, since the mayor's not here?
First of all, motion made is take item 22 and 23 collectively. All in favor?
We do have a correspondence for item 22.
Okay. Clerk, please, let us run a meeting here. So, okay, so the motion made to take items 22 and 23 collectively.
Lay it on the table to our next meeting.
Okay.
And invite, I've just got to get these two resolutions back on...
And the motion made is to lay both these on the table for the next meeting.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items 22 and 23 are laid on the table for the next meeting. Clerk, please read the next piece of...
Mr. Chairman, can we suspend the rules and take item number 21, while Mr. Markat is still on the bill?
Motion made, motion made second to suspend the rules, take item number 21. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk read item 21.
Item number 21, Mr. President, is a resolution sponsored by Counsel Peter Rino Palatano, that a representative from the mayor's office appear to provide an update on the repairs of the E-911 building stairs.
Mr. Chairman, can we invite Jamie Erickson from, before us? We all do. All right, Mr. Erickson, lay this on the table until they come back.
Motion made second to lay this on the table, to, oh, excuse me, here's Mr. Erickson. Our motion made to invite Ms. Erickson to the desk. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed?
Hi.
Do we have any questions, Ms. Erickson?
Yes.
Counsel Palatano.
Thank you. I was just concerned, I was looking at the last year's budget, I know that the money was allocated to repair the stairs in front of the communications building.
Correct.
The E-911 building, and I was by there this weekend, and I'm just concerned, because we're now coming at the end of this fiscal year, what's the status, and what's going on with the repairs for that?
I honestly have to defer this to Jay, and I realize he stepped out. His bags are in the back, so I'm assuming he's either in the restroom or somewhere else. I apologize, I'm not up to speed with that project.
Mr. Chairman, again, like that case, we could hold this over until Mr. Markat comes back.
Sure. Counsel Delasola, you have some questions in the meantime?
Yeah, Counsel, I had the same concerns. I called the mayor's office, he had a day on the stairs, and I think we had money of $50,000 to be behind the stairs. They got three prices, and they were over the $50,000. So this is the delay on the repair of the stairs. It's funny, you asked us, because I called last Thursday and talked to the mayor's office with the same concerns, and that's the answer, I got it.
Yes. Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yeah, on this, if we're going to repair these stairs for over $50,000, isn't there a study being made to do away with that building along with the police station and the rec center? So why would we even want to repair these stairs at this time, if the study says we're going to do away with it?
Well, looking at compliance of a set of stairs to ensure public safety usually takes precedent, even if there is a study going on, so if those stairs are not in good working order, obviously to ensure the safety of the citizens of Everett, and also to ensure that the City of Everett is not hit with any sort of liability claims. If they're not in compliance now, they should be fixed now, even if within the next five, 10 years, something might be happening to that location.
Okay.
I did notice Mr. Markat did just walk in.
Excuse me, our motion made to invite Mr. Markat up here. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
What was the question? Oh, okay. Jay Markat, City Service Director, last fall, this went out to bid, and the numbers came back extremely high, so we want to take a second look at it, actually, the third look, second look since I've been here, and we're going to see what we can do in-house. As recently as two weeks ago, we did some wall repair, Mike DeFlorio in-house, he's an exceptional mason, and he did the repair work on that. The only thing that we really have left is the stairs, and we are still contemplating what to do, as to either go out to bid just for the stairs, do it in-house, or like what you're saying, look at the overall, you know, big picture as to the future of the building. But the immediate concern is the condition of the stairs, and I'm leaning towards fixing it more on a permanent basis, but we're still tossing around the ideas.
If I may, Mr. Markat, is that, is that $50,000 the city's cost for doing that?
Correct. The bids that came back last fall were $50,000, in the range of $50,000. I want to say the highest was, or the lowest was in the $47,000 range, but that was to repair the wall, the walkway coming into it, and the stairs. It was multiple items that needed to be repaired. Now, we feel that with the, we did the wall repair already in-house, we can do the whole We can do the whole job in-house, it's just a matter of personnel and time. It would probably take us quite a bit longer with one person to do that, opposed to, you know, going out to bid, they could probably bang it out in a week or so. But we're, like I said, we're contemplating what avenue to go down with either going out new bid, repairing it in-house, or, like I said, you know, look at the long-term ramifications of the building itself and, you know, the future of it and stuff like that. So we're still in discussions.
Well, during the summit, they had an extra part-time workers, where you could probably free up some time for some workers to actually do that?
Correct. July one, when the new budget kicks in, we have some money set aside for it as a line item for temporary employees, and absolutely it would be one of the things that we could have help Mr. DeFlorio in repairing that stairs. Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Counselor DePaulitano and Simonelli.
Thank you. Yeah, what had brought- so now, so there has been some repair work done?
Correct, on the wall.
Okay, and what'll happen to the rest of the money that was allocated this year? Will that be returned back to free cash?
There was no money allocated to that, as far as I know. That went out to bid, and we're going to try to pay for it through repair maintenance line items within the budget.
Just my main concerns here are a couple of things. One, first of all, all the work that's been done down at Glendale Park, you know, or at the high school and all that, you know, to be able to look across out from that park and see the stairs, it really is an eyesore. Public safety side of it is a big aspect of it. And then to top it off, I got cornered by a constituent who actually was fined for similar damage on their own stairs. I'm sure it's not exactly the same type of situation, but they got fined. So the thing is, the question they had is, why had they held to a standard that the city has held to a different standard? I don't believe that the city is being held a different, is we're holding it to a different standard, but this is the perception that our residents see when they know that there's been a discussion about a repair and it's not being done. So if you can give us an idea, rough idea of when we could be expecting to have those stairs completed, a realistic estimate?
This summer.
Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you. Mr. President, to you, to Mr. Markat. Is there- I was down there myself, you know, just I haven't, never been down there before, and I just went downstairs and I was talking to the director, Eddie Mastacola. Is there any plans of doing anything downstairs, because it's pretty messed up down there? I mean, as far as the- they have the kitchen down there, it's all messed. They got a shower room down there. They got this big room down there, and it's- and also, I just wonder if there's any plans of doing any work inside the building?
Like I said, as part of the three options that we have, that the future of the building is definitely in discussions, and, you know, repairing the inside is obviously a concern.
All right, thank you.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Erickson, Mr. Markat? Thank you. Motion before you.
Chairman, on a request to refer this back to sponsor, and if there's a need to bring them back in September, then we'll address at that time. But right now, I'm confident that-
Motion made and second to refer back to sponsor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Just to refer back to sponsor for later time. Counselor DeFlorio.
Could I please get up on a personal point of privilege?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Reading the nine-one-one reminded me of something. On Friday night, we had a little incident on Diarrav where a four-year-old child was left alone for two and a half hours in the police department, and Adam Magucci, our own, answered the phone, nine-eleven dispatcher, did an excellent job, and I would like to thank them for their service. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and second for a big thanks to our go-to nine-one-one, especially Adam Magucci. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk, read the regular other business.
Item number three. Item number three is an order sponsored by Council Mike Maccasay, his president, authorized the mayor to apply for, accept, and expend grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Community Grants Program.
Second. Motion made and second for favorable action. We'll call vote.
Counselor Del Sol.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Paulitano.
Yes.
Counselor Chatter.
Yes.
Counselor Sarni.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Maccasay.
Yes.
Ten ye, zero nays, Mr. President.
The order is passed, authorizing the mayor to apply for and accept and expend grant funds.
Item number four, is an order sponsored by Council Mike Maccasay, his president, to accept donations two hundred dollars from the past family to the Department of Veterans Services account.
Fable action on the order and a letter of thanks to be sent.
Second.
Motion made and second to accept the donation, a letter of thanks to be sent to the past family. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll send a letter of thanks to the past family. Thank you very much.
Item number five, nope, item number-
Six.
Six. It's an order sponsored by Council Mike Maccasay, his president, to adopt the state's stretch code regulations to the city of Everett's ordinances, in order to become a green community and become eligible for many state grants.
Motion made and before you.
Fable action?
Second.
Mr. Chairman? Chairman, on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm at this moment very against this, and the reason-
Counselor Hanlon.
I'm sorry, at this moment, I'm very against this, and the reason for it is that if you look at the very last section of the stretch code, it says, "The stretch code is codified by the Board of Building Regulations and Standards of 780 CMR Appendix 115AA, including any future additions, amendments, or modifications herein incorporated by reference into the city of Everett building ordinance." What that means is, five years down the road, they can put anything they want, and this will just pop right in, and there's- and no way I can read that as being something other than what that says. So that's why I'm opposed to doing this.
Counselor McKinnon. Motion-
Second.
Second.
Second the motion.
At this time, it's declared not routine, so-
To the next meeting?
Yes. All the committee is up to its term.
So I make a motion to refer this to the next meeting and invite-
Let's invite Mr. Solprup tonight. Motion made and second to invite Mr. Solprup up. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And also, why don't we permission to also authorize Ms. Erickson to come before us. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, interruption. After the, maybe after the questions, I mean, this is something that's very important, so I recommend it goes to committee. I think we need a little more time on this.
What, where would you like to send it?
Well, I, let's have the gentleman, I know it takes, I wasn't fast enough, I apologize. So I don't want to be rude to the gentleman, but my recommendation is that this goes to committee, because I believe there's a lot of questions in this, and this takes a little more time than sending it to the next meeting, than having more questions, and then going to committee. So I feel that this should actually go directly to committee for a better understanding.
Excuse Ms. Solprup and Mr. Erickson.
I agree with that. I don't know enough about it.
Guys, what, what would you like to do here? If you're going to send it, there's a lot of information that's required. Do you want to ask the questions tonight? The motion hasn't been made yet.
Well, I know we invite Mr. Sol, someone invited Mr. Solprup and Mr. Erickson up.
That would be me. I invited all of them.
We accepted them being up here, and I certainly don't want to be rude, but I wasn't fast enough to say-
Well, why don't we just ask the questions anyhow, we'll determine where we're going to send this.
So on the motion, you can ask the questions.
So you can stay.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Ask questions. Okay, who would like to speak first? Counselor McKinnon.
Mr. Solprup, we had discussion on this matter prior to this. Could you explain this briefly so that we could have some sort of understanding of what this is trying to be?
Absolutely. The BBRS is the Code Promulgating Section of the State of Massachusetts, given them under the Mass. General Law. The BBRS puts out the Building Code every year, and the Building Code changes on a three-year basis, and we are bound to accept the Building Code. The Stretch Energy Code is an amendment to the Massachusetts Energy Code, which is written by the International Code Council. The Stretch Energy Code is adopted by one hundred and forty communities right now in the state of Massachusetts, and it allows communities to set higher standards for energy efficiency for new homes and for some renovations. This is done in order to reduce our need for foreign oil and reduce energy costs in our cities and towns and to our citizens. So the advantages are that the homeowner or the buyer in the market who is looking for a home in our city, and if we're building under the Stretch Code, that home becomes very valuable to that home buyer, because they're going to experience a reduction in energy costs up to twenty percent beyond what the other communities who do not offer this Stretch Code. So basically, that's the advantage of the adoption in our community.
Okay, how does this help or hurt the city?
Well, it helps the city in many ways, and I'm going to turn it a little bit, that question over to Mr. Erickson, and he can give you a little bit more explanation about that.
Certainly. So as one of the beta consultants referenced earlier, the Stretch Code is one component of the several components that are associated with the Green Communities Act. And if we were to adopt the Stretch Code along with adopting a couple of other policies and some other things that we already do, we could apply for green communities designation, of which, as Jim mentioned, one hundred and forty communities in Massachusetts have done. And then that would open us up for additional grants, additional funding sources, additional monies that could come to the city to help us do building renovations, to do improvements in our neighborhoods at street trees, do crosswalks, buy energy-efficient vehicles for our fleets such as Jim's fleet or the police department or other fleets. These are all program funds that are allotted to green communities. So we'd have to get that community designation first, and then we can apply for some of those programs. The Stretch Code, as Jim mentioned, is really an amendment to the existing building code that we're required to adhere to, and it really only deals with, as Jim mentioned, a small fraction of projects that happen in the city. It's new construction, and there's a certain scale of renovation size of a project. If you're just replacing a door or just replacing a window, it doesn't really impact you. It's really a certain scale of a renovation project or new construction. Did I mention that right?
You did.
Very good, okay, thank you.
Counselor McGonigal.
Just very brief, to the gentleman, when it's gone into committee anyways, those, I believe, when all those questions, they really didn't ask and answer, and then brought back to us that night to be opened, but just when it goes into committee, how big is the Stretch Energy Code, Chairman? How many pages is it?
I have- Twenty pages.
Twenty pages, so that each member could take a look at that even before the committee made? So when they go in, they can ask the question. Once again, my brief conversation with you, you explained a lot of things to me that I wasn't aware of, because years ago, I was very against the program. It started to change my mind, I don't want to take too much of your time.
Because it's going into committee anyways, so I'd be grateful for that if each member could have a copy of it so we could review it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Sarni.
Is there a deadline on this?
Well, there is a deadline on our Green Communities application. We need to apply for Green Communities designation basically in September. So we need to get all of our DUCs as part of that application lined up before that time, of which this, you know, assuming we get approval, approval of the Stretch Code is one of those DUCs.
You also mentioned briefly that it wouldn't really affect a homeowner that was, if they're changing just a couple of windows or a door or something in their home, or is it going to be, if someone decided to change ten windows in their house, is there something that's going to cost them more money to do today?
Here's how it works residentially. On a new home, a new home would be required to pass a HERS rating test. So a contractor comes in, he pulls a permit, he's got to comply with the Stretch Energy Code. He has to make that building more energy efficient, and to the point where this new building actually gets the duct tested with a pressure test, measuring the Pascal's on either side of the fan to see if there's a loss or an opening in any of the ductwork, as well as the whole house. They actually put a full door fan on the front door of the house, close all the windows in the house, and suck air out of the house, and they measure the drop in pressure on either side of that fan. And if it's an unacceptable drop in pressure, then they have to go find the leak so that we, that house doesn't get sold to somebody who's going to have air coming in through the soffits. In addition-
That's only new construction.
That's only new construction. Now, that's a brand-new home, a single-family home built on three stories and less. Now, when you get into a renovation, so a kitchen or a bathroom, which is the typical work that we do, we probably build four new houses a year here in Everett that would, this would comply to. Now, we get into the kitchen and bath renovation that happens on a regular basis out of my office. You open up the existing walls of the kitchen. The code only requires you to fill the cavity with insulation. There is no specific R-value even achieved. There's no specific insulation to be used. It just says, "Fill that cavity with insulation." There's no furring out of the walls, there's no bringing down of the rafters, you're just filling that cavity with insulation, and you're closing that wall as you normally would do. There's no additional cost. Now, if that homeowner does a window over the kitchen sink or a bathroom window, that window needs to be Energy Star certified. So that window, instead of being a hundred and fifty-dollar window, is a hundred and seventy-five-dollar window, because it's energy-rated and it has a higher U-value. U-value is the reciprocal of an R-value, and it shows that window's ability to resist the flow of heat or temperature changes from one side to the other. So there's a minor impact in this for a major benefit to the city in the end.
Thank you.
Before we wrap this up, just one quick question. What does this add to the price of new construction? Again, I'll give you just two examples, then I'll let you go. One is, I have a three-family that burns down. I get a hundred-thousand-dollar thing to build it. Now that we're stretch green or whatever we're doing, it comes out to a hundred and thirty. Who's paid for that?
Well, there's been studies, actually, the three-family, and we can find that in the Q and A, right on the internet, and the examples of three-family. Complete gun renovation of a three-family, the additional cost overall is fourteen-hundred dollars. And that, and that's because of things like this. When you do the heating systems over again, they have to have a certain rating. They can't be seventy percent efficient. They have to be ninety-four percent efficient. You have to put a good heating and cooling system in there. And the windows that you have to do around each unit, when you blow those windows out and do them, they're about thirty bucks a piece more. So you're into fourteen-hundred dollars. What they project is the payback on that is about, it's a ten-year payback on that job, so you save about a hundred and forty dollars a year on energy costs on that. You're only making minor improvements now. You're only improving the glass, because the insulation in the walls doesn't change. You just have to fill the cavities again. That's all you have to do. No furring of the walls, no bringing down of the rafters.
Next scenario, we try to develop Lower Broadway, Everett. Tax rates the highest in Massachusetts. So do you think it's wise that we make it the most expensive place to build in Massachusetts also?
Well, we'd be on par with the other hundred and forty cities and towns of the state.
Are any hundred and forty more than any urban cities like Everett?
Absolutely.
Actually, in our region, we are really next to, I think Chelsea, one of the only ones that has not passed this. Medford has passed it, Somerville, Cambridge, Boston, Brookline, Revere, and you name it.
Doing a little building over Chelsea, I'd say, huh?
Now, commercially, there are exemptions, and let's start, commercially, initially, we're going to have, they're going to be mostly LEED-certified projects, which means they're in line for energy conservation credits. All the air conditioning systems, the heating systems that they use, the window systems, they're in line for credits from the government in order to have reduced cost on their materials. So architects these days are building these buildings above and beyond what the Stretch Energy Code is providing. And there's also exemptions. For instance, a warehouse, a supermarket, a specialty building under forty thousand square feet, not even in compliance, doesn't even have to comply with the Stretch Energy Code. So there's no effect on them at all, so they're exempt from it. We have certain requirements. So when you get into the buildings that are about a hundred thousand square feet, what you've got to do is show that you are achieving a twenty percent better than the average, than the regular building code would allow you, you got to have twenty percent more efficiency. And that's all done by the engineers. I'm not doing any of this testing. I'm receiving paperwork. It's going into the file, and I'm making sure that all the checklists are done.
Thank you very much. You were here, just we'd have a few questions. We want to be sent this committee. We'll ask some more. Mr. Hill, one quick question.
Just one thing that I might want you to bring to the committee with you. You said there's a hundred and forty-three cities and towns, municipalities that have accepted this. What about the other two hundred and thirteen? What's going on with them? Are they going to do this? They work on it? You must know what's going on.
Yes, by and large, from what we understand, many of the communities and towns in the Commonwealth are looking at doing this. There is a requirement that you need to apply, in our case, by the end of September, so we need to get our applications in in September. We do know a handful of communities. Actually, we started this process about two months ago internally, and since we started it, five communities have adopted it.
So when, when did this start?
This program started several years ago. It actually has been around for about five, six years.
The motion-
With the customary thanks, we want to send it to-
Committee.
Thank you for your knowledge tonight, and motion made and second to send the community development. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I believe we have Ms. Erickson. Mr. Solprup invited also to it.
Yes.
Clerk read the next matter of business.
Mr. President, I make a motion to reconsider number two, please.
Second.
What happened to number two? Motion made and second to refer item number two. All in favor?
Reconsideration.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Clerk read item number two.
Item number two is, an order sponsored by Council Mike Maccasay, his president, to position the great general court to remove the position of fire chief of civil service law due to lack of entrance by chief example of past few years, to appear for when the position of fire chief eventually opens. This would not affect the current fire chief's status in any way.
Counselor Simonelli. Counsel Simonelli.
Yes, I'd like to withdraw that motion, to put it in the committee and make a motion to refer it to our next council meeting and invite the same people up, where maybe we can talk to it and then maybe vote for it then.
Second.
Motion made to refer this to our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, this piece will come before us our next meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Clerk, next matter of business, please.
Item number seven, the petition frees the auto care at 172 Chelsea Street for renewal of a mechanical license which expires June 12.
Is everything in order?
Yes, if you remember, this was a business that you gave a six-month license to. There's been absolutely no issues, no negative reports from neighbors or anything.
Fable action.
Okay, so favorable action then.
Second.
Motion made in for favorable action, roll call vote.
Counsel Delisola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sonny. Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Maccasay.
Yes.
Ten yeas, one nays, Mr. President.
It says, this petition.
I'm sorry, ten yeas, zero nays.
This petition has passed for the renewal of the mechanical license.
Item number eight, committee on government operations, public safety, service report on resolution offered by Counsel Liam McKinnon to invite Sean Corlone of Freistern and the next government operates Public Safety, Public Service Committee meeting to explain his idea for five K rates with the city of, within city of Everett to benefit autism awareness.
Refer this to the mayor's office, city services, the chief of police, and with a response back at our next meeting.
Second the motion.
Motion made in second to refer this to the mayor's office, the.
City services.
City services.
Chief of police.
Chief of police, and we come back with the information for our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk read the next matter of business.
Item number ten, order sponsored by Counsel Michael Maccasay's president authorized mayor to apply for accepting expend grant funds with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for our common backyard's grant program with pertinent appendages.
Fable action, Mr. Chairman?
Ten, notice that this was referred from our last meeting.
Last report, okay.
Motion made. Motion made in second, roll call vote.
Counsel Delisola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon. Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sonny.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Maccasay.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
The order has passed. Clerk read the next matter of business, please.
Item number eleven, there's an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Maccasay's president to authorize establishment of revolving funds for 2015 as listed and described for the following departments, mayor chief, please. Do we already do this one?
No, favorable action on the order?
No. It's already been.
Red.
Yeah, we voted on this one.
We already voted on it, didn't we?
Item number twelve, is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Maccasay's president that city of Everett rescinds the listed amounts that have been authorized to be borrowed but are no longer needed for the purposes for which they were initially approved.
Fable action on the order?
Second.
Motion made second, clerk, roll call vote.
Counsel Delisola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sonny.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Maccasay.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Yes, and the order has passed.
Item number thirteen, is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Maccasay's president that eight million nine hundred twenty-five thousand dollars hereby appropriated pay costs of listed capital improvements for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2014, and to meet this appropriation, the city treasurer with the approval of the mayor has authorized the power set amount pursuant to chapter forty-four, section seven and eight of the Massachusetts general laws.
Fable action.
I believe we have suspend rule thirteen.
Suspend rule thirteen.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
It's a money issue. Suspend rule thirteen?
Motion made in second to suspend rule thirteen, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. On the audit, favorable action.
Counsel Delisola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
No.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sonny.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Maccasay.
No.
Eight yeas, two nays, Mr. President.
The order has passed for the appropriation. Clerk read the next matter of business, please.
Item number fourteen, is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Maccasay's president city of Everett hereby establishes stabilization fund for the purpose of funding employees' recruit sick and vacation buybacks as established by collective bargaining agreements and city policy.
Fable action on the order?
Second.
Motion made second, favorable action, clerk, roll call vote.
Counsel Delisola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
No.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sonny.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Maccasay.
Yes.
Nine yeas, one nay, Mr. President.
Clerk, read next number fifteen, please.
Item number fifteen, is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Maccasay's president city hereby establishes stabilization fund for the purpose of funding the capital needs of the city in accordance with his honor, the mayor.
Fable action on the order?
Mr. Chairman, on the motion.
Counsel McGonigal.
We just have somebody from the mayor's office just explain that, just what the need is for this stabilization fund.
A motion to invite Mr. Viskey to the desk. To explain this, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
As far, I'm sorry, as far as the need for that, I wouldn't say there's a need, it's just a way that we're gonna try to fund capital needs going forward. We can establish a stabilization fund just like we do for the rainy day fund on, we just established the employee leave buyback fund where we can set up a trust fund and we can appropriate money to that account. And then we can come before you and ask for money from that account to fund capital needs of the city. So instead of using free cash or bonding in some respects, we can use this particular fund to fund capital projects. The reason why this fund is good is because all the interest stays within the fund. So if we appropriate money, I believe on the agenda is a half a million dollar request for free cash to go into this fund. That interest will stay with the fund and it'll accrue and it won't get closed out on a year-to-year basis. So it acts like a stabilization account. It requires two-thirds vote to establish, requires two-thirds vote to spend money from it and it would also require two-thirds vote to repurpose that money for something else. So all the action of that stabilization fund has to come before you. But we do have some free cash available right now and the idea is to try to set up these trust funds so that we have funding sources for, in particular, extraordinary unforeseen capital events that may happen and we have a direct funding source. So that's really the purpose of it. It's more hopefully good government as opposed to a necessity. It's just trying to establish our funding mechanisms that make sense. And that's the purpose of that.
No further questions.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, DeFlorio. Mr. Viskey, is this something that you plan on funding every year?
Correct. In the budget, you'll see the financial reserve policies will show that every year when free cash is certified, we will have, hopefully, perfunctory votes to fund the certain stabilization accounts that we've established so that there's an annual mechanism of funding it. And then as part of the CIP every year, we may request you to appropriate some of that money to fund specific items depending on the size and nature of the program.
Right, so to make that clear again, for the viewing audience, you cannot spend this money without coming in front of this board.
We cannot spend that money without a two-thirds vote from the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yeah, this is just to establish the fund. There is no monies involved at this present time. When you want money to go into this fund, you're gonna come before us and ask for that money. Is that correct?
I believe in two orders down, we're gonna have, we have a request for a half a million to go into that fund. But yes, there's no money there if you establish it and then hopefully, five minutes later, we'll have a half a million dollars in there.
From the chair, five eight, what's the difference between free cash, stabilization fund, which you already have a stabilization part two, what's the difference between them?
Well, free cash.
So we're gonna be more or less appropriating even more money and put into this stabilization fund, but nothing in the other stabilization fund, which we already have?
Well, we'll start from the top.
Okay.
Free cash is certified each and every year when we close our books.
In November, yep.
Just around November. At, on June 30th, our free cash goes away and then it's re-certified by the Department of Revenue. So that never carries over. We can use that money for the specific year, then we close our books and they re-certify free cash. We have a stabilization account that we'll call the rainy day fund for any kind of extraordinary unforeseen events in the city as a whole. Now, legislation was passed to allow cities and towns to create other stabilization accounts for particular purposes. So we're using the same law as our general stabilization account and we set up the employee leave buyback account and hopefully, the capital improvement account. So it'll be three separate, I guess, call them savings accounts for, two for a particular purpose and then the stabilization as a whole could be for any lawful purpose. But you also have the ability to change the purpose of both of those employee leave buyback stabilization and capital. But it's just a mechanism for me to, for the administration to set up an account to put some money in. I like using free cash as an example, you never know if that's gonna be high or low. So when we get a free cash certification, I like to try to put about fifty percent of the free cash certification in these types of accounts so we have access to them.
Are we cutting anything somewhere to appropriate that cash? We just adding that back onto the tax roll to appropriate that money?
Well, you have the free cash available, so there's no additional taxing needed to fund this half a million dollars.
The money has to come from somewhere, right?
It's, it's, right now, the request that you'll see.
Yes, the request.
Would be from, would be from free cash. So it's not an additional burden. For example, if I put half a million.
So you want the free cash before the books are closed? That's what you're saying tonight?
If, yeah, if this fund is established. But the idea would be if we needed to put a half a million dollars in the operating budget, that would come from raising appropriate rate.
What is it free cash?
A little over two million dollars at this point.
And what happens to 1.5 of it? Does that, does that go back towards the reducing the tax load or what does it do?
At this point, we have two requests before you for 200,000 and 500,000 and that'll leave us a balance of 1.3. And then I have to look at how the fiscal year is gonna end and we may come back before you and vote that a certain way. I haven't gotten that far yet, but right now, I'm in the analysis of looking at.
So that's, free cash is excess tax money. It's what we overtaxed what we have left. That's what free cash really becomes, right?
It's really, it's really the result of revenues that come in over budgeted and, as well as appropriation turnbacks for, you know, in simple terms. It's basically when you set the budget, you estimate you're gonna collect 170 million in revenue and you estimate you're gonna expend 170 million balanced budget. If we happen to collect 172 million in revenue and we only spend 169 million, one would think that you may create 3 million dollars of free cash.
We can't put that 2 billion on the tax, total tax thing, right? Because we, it could be 168 the tax thing.
There could be a vote of free cash to reduce the tax rate. Certainly, we did that last year, we may do it this year. I haven't, I'd like to see where we end the fiscal year before I do that. And also, when free cash is certified in September, October, as we spoke of, we can also take a vote forward at that time to use free cash to lower taxes. So we have time between when the budget's adopted and when we certify our tax rate with Department of Revenue to make those decisions. But right now, I'm just trying to get through fiscal year 14, make sure everything's clean. We are having a fairly good year with regard to that, so I do imagine that we'll have free cash generated next year, but I'm hesitant to put a number or anything on it. But operationally-wise, we're doing pretty well in 14.
182 million, you better be doing pretty well. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Viskey. Do you have any more questions out there?
Fable action. Excuse me, thank you.
No.
Motion before you.
Fable action on the order, suspend rule thirteen?
Motion made to suspend rule thirteen, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Fable action? Motion made, motion made favorable action. Roll call vote.
Counsel Delisola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
No.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
I was going too fast, Counsel Hamlin?
No.
I thought so, whatever. Please shut your mics off. Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sonny.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Maccasay.
No.
Eight yeas, two nays, Mr. President.
The order has passed establishing the stabilization fund. Clerk read the next matter of business.
Item number sixteen, is an order sponsored by Counsel Maccasay's president that the sum of 200,000 dollars be transferred and appropriated from budgetary fund balance to the employee buyback stabilization fund. This transfer and appropriation of fund the newly proposed employee buyback stabilization fund.
Suspend rule thirteen. Excuse me, motion made second to suspend rule thirteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Fable action on the order?
Motion made in second, favorable action. Clerk, read the roll.
Counsel Delisola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
No.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sonny.
Yes.
Council Sichetta?
Yes.
Council Sani?
Yes.
Council Simonelli?
Yes.
Council Marquez?
No.
Two yeas, uh, eight yeas, two nays, Mr. President.
Uh, the order has passed and the sum will be transferred.
Item number seventeen is an order sponsored by Council Michael Marquez, his president, the sum of five hundred thousand dollars be transferred and appropriated to the budgetary fund, fund balance into capital improvement stabilization fund. This transfer and appropriation will fund the newly proposed capital improvement stabilization funds.
Suspend rule thirteen. Motion made second to suspend rule thirteen. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Fable action on the order?
Second.
Motion made in, uh, second, favorable action. Excuse me, uh, yield the second for-
No, I'd second it, was second.
Oh, you.
Okay. That was the second. Okay. Motion made in second, uh-
Mr. Chairman, just a few short moments. We've, we've transferred ten million one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Not one single mention was mentioned about the people of Everett and what they're gonna get out of this. We've got twenty-three automobiles running around Everett that weren't here a few years ago. But all brand-new equipment. I don't know what more we can spend money on, but they're asking for it and I think we should be a little bit more thinking about what the people have to pay and with our a hundred and eighty-two million dollar budget coming up this year, that's why I'm voting no on these things and that's, I'm just not being nasty about it. I just want you to know that I'm not in favor of spending all this money.
And I also think, Phil, with, uh, Council Handlin. Uh, clerk, um, roll call vote.
Council Delissola?
Yes.
Council DeFlorio?
Yes.
Council Handlin?
No.
Council McGonigal?
Yes.
Council McKinnon?
Yes.
Council Apolitano?
Yes.
Council Sichetta?
Yes.
Council Sani?
Yes.
Council Simonelli?
Yes.
Council Marquez?
No.
Eight yeas, two nays, Mr. President.
Uh, the order has passed. Clerk, may I read the next roll, um, next order of business.
Item number nineteen, Mr. President, is a resolution sponsored by Council John Liam McKinnon in relation to explaining the fifty thousand dollars earmarked to draw over the snack shack and bathrooms at Sacramento Park.
Invite Mr. Erickson up, please.
Second. Motion made second to invite Mr. Erickson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Erickson.
Mr. Erickson, briefly on this, what-
Counsel, excuse me, uh, Counsel McKinnon, I'm sorry.
Certainly, Jamie Erickson, Director of Planning and Development. Um, since the last time we met on this, there's been quite a few different developments on what we're using the money for. Initially, uh, the, the city services department, along with some volunteers from the Little League and some other folks, thought we could work and just renovate the existing snack shack. Um, when they got in there and started looking at this, the, the, the condition of the structure, they realized that to make it compliant with ADA requirements, it was, it was infeasible. We were unable to do that. So I've been working closely with the city services department to understand what the next step or next approach would be and it's looking like we might need to build a brand-new structure at that location. Um, that's where we are right now. I have a set of schematic plans that we're just working through on my desk. I just got them today from, um, our city services department and we're working with them. Uh, in addition to that, one of the items that you voted on earlier was to apply for grant funding through the parks grant. That park grant that we're applying for would be for the renovation of the entire park. It wouldn't cover all of the cost of the park grant, but, and there's a, there's a local required match as part of that grant process, but we're also looking to incorporate whatever we do at the snack shack into that larger park design. And so we might be shifting things around depending on, on how that design process goes. Um, and we're in that process literally as we speak. Um, so we are trying to make sure that we spend the money soon, but also make sure that it's not in a location that with the larger park design doesn't make sense.
That, that money that was earmarked from the senator, uh, who testified before us on this, uh, that the fifty thousand dollars, uh, one, what is the timeline or timeframe on that to be spent?
From my understanding, there is no timeframe for it to be spent. We do actually have the money in-house. It's in an account that we worked with, um, the auditor's office to establish and we have that in-house, so I don't believe there's a requirement that we have to spend it by a certain time.
Okay.
But I do understand that, that, that the senator would wish to spend it sooner rather than later, so we are trying to make sure that we do still make progress on the project and do spend the money, uh, but we also wanna make sure we don't spend it in a way that if we redesign the park, doesn't make sense for a park redesign.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Erickson. Uh, it's motion before you.
Uh, I'm gonna refer us back to sponsor.
Motion made second, refer back to sponsor. Sponsor, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Refer back to sponsor. Clerk, read the, uh, next matter before you.
Item number twenty is a resolution sponsored by Council Peter Apolitano, that committee into a special meeting is not be scheduled for six p.m. to ensure maximum participation from the city councils.
Uh, Council Apolitano.
Thank you. Um, the intent behind this is that, uh, uh, some of us don't get out of work until after five-thirty and, uh, we've just recently had a meeting, uh, scheduled at, at that. We've also had a, last month, we had a meeting, two meetings that were scheduled back-to-back. Uh, there's only eleven of us, it's a smaller group. Uh, the intent for us, for us to be more efficient, but again, we need to be able to have enough time to get in here, get prepared and be able to do the course of business. Uh, I'm gonna actually request that this be referred to sponsor, back to sponsor and I'm gonna refile it our next meeting as an order.
Okay. So motion before is refer back to sponsor. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Refer back to sponsor. Clerk, next, uh, next, uh, piece of business. Twenty-four.
Item number twenty-four is a resolution sponsored by Council Richard Delissola, Joe McGonigal, Peter Apolitano, Cynthia Sani, Fred Capone, Michael Marquez, John Liam McKinnon, Rosa DeFlorio, Sal Sichetta, and John Handlin. The city council and mayor are duly, as duly elected representatives of the residents and people of the city of Everett, express our enthusiasm and hold high support for the Wind Everett Project and its transformation effect, transformative, I'm sorry, effect on our city.
Fable action.
Uh, on the motion, please?
Uh, we have to, uh, suspend, uh, rule eighteen, so could that be in a form of motion?
Suspend rule eighteen.
Motion made in second to, uh, to suspend rule eighteen. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. It's on the floor, uh, Council Simonelli.
I'd like to, uh, respond to this. Seems like the only, my name's not on this, uh, on this resolution for a reason. What I'm really, what I'm really getting at is, I'm, I'm not against, I always been against the casino, but the thing is, if the, I'm, I will vote for something as long as it pertains to the people of Everett. Now, if this, 'cause, not because this guy has given us thirty million dollars, when he comes up here, he doesn't have to, we don't have to give him anything. And that's, I don't wanna give the corporations big money and, uh, because he's giving us thirty, thirty million dollars. If it's something good for the people of Everett, I'm definitely gonna vote for it, but it's gonna be for Everett, Everett people and not corporations. Thank you.
Uh, matter before you, is anybody-
Fable action, it was second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, it has passed at, uh, the overwhelming support for the, uh, Wind, uh, Wind Everett Project is, uh, met in a very positive way with this group, so, uh, good luck this week.
Item number twenty-five, the city council made a request, one sponsored by Council Liam McKinnon to replace street light that is out in front of seventy-four Preston Street. Also, the flashing red light for the fire box right next to the street light is also out. Referring to, uh, city services and fire prevention.
Motion made second, refer to, uh, city services and fire prevention. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
If you'd like to-
Motion made second, if you're in, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.